A little technical difficulty there, you may. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Kincaid?
Here.
Kinnaman?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Tiwold?
Here.
Von Hayden?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Monday, August 21st session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its Monday night sessions, the council listens to public input, holds public hearings, and sometimes listens to public presentations. During this time, we invite your comment and ask questions in preparation for our legislative session, which convenes in these chambers tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 p.m. We do have interesting and important items on our agenda tonight, which include some zoning changes and parking changes, which are important to us. We're going to hear about a new program coming to Eau Claire called Invest Health, and we do have a public discussion about a proposed living wage ordinance tonight. It's a full agenda, and we do welcome those of you who are joining us in chambers, and are grateful, as always, to Community Television for streaming and broadcasting these proceedings for people who cannot attend in person. For those of you who want to make a comment tonight, I'll just briefly review the protocol. There are agendas at the back of chambers. I see many of you have picked them up, but if you want to refer to one, they're on the back table. When your item of interest comes up, it's introduced, and then staff makes a presentation. We ask a few questions sometimes, and then there's time for the public input. When we're ready for public input, you may approach the podium right in front of us and begin by stating your name and your address for the public record. We have never and will not tonight take comments pro and con on a particular issue. I have found, after 12 years of sitting up here, that people just know how to conduct themselves well. I've never had to police whether someone, there's too many pros or too many cons on an issue. We hold ourselves to a very high standard of civility, and we expect the same of everyone who is in this room tonight. So you can politely come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and begin by making your comment. We do institute a time limit on comments. Tonight, that time limit will be three minutes. We find that this time limit helps the meeting flow along, which has a value in itself, but more importantly, it keeps the meeting fair, so that people at the end of the comment period have the same amount of time and the same attention that those at the beginning. So we do institute a time limit. You may come back up and speak, but only after everyone else has spoken for the first time, and then at the pleasure of the chair. If you have any questions tonight -- oh, I forgot to say that in order to help you mark that three minutes, we have a little lighting system in front of you. The green light, which you'll see when you're standing up there, shows when you start. The yellow light shows that you have a minute left. The red light will show that your three minutes are up. And I will politely ask you to end your comments at the end of the three minutes. You don't need that whole time, but it's there. Sometimes we have questions of you. If you would please linger at the podium for just a moment until I ask if council members have questions of you. And if you need any help during the evening, Ms. Merle, who sits right here, is happy to help you. So, oh, and lastly, if you have something you want to say, but you're not comfortable speaking tonight, you may leave a written comment, and there are blue pieces of paper at the back of chambers for that exercise. You fill it out and leave it back there. We receive all of those written comments by our legislative session tomorrow, so they have the same weight as if you're speaking in front of us. That just helps people who maybe get a little bit nervous tonight. Oh, I think that's everything for the introduction. Before we begin with our agenda, I do seek the council's, let's see, approval to amend the agenda, so that item number three, the living wage item, is taken as the last item. So after the Old Town Hall Road, parking, Invest Health, and then living wage. Are there objections to amending the agenda?
Point of order.
Councilmember Emanuel?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is there -- sometimes when council has presentations, staff has a limit of maybe 20 minutes. Do you anticipate that any of these items would take 20 minutes, or do you have an idea of kind of the aggregate time before citizens would be able to speak?
The -- I think I'll refer to Mr. Peters, who put together the presentation.
The Invest Health presentation will be less than 20 minutes.
Less than 20?
Hold it to 15.
15 minutes. Councilmember Worthman?
Point of inquiry is to the chair, what is the thinking or process or idea behind doing this?
It's our practice that agenda items that only involve city staff always go at the end of the agenda. And that's to be polite to the public who's coming in here tonight. However, the agenda item on the living wage may be very lengthy, and the request was made, and I considered asking the body if they would object to moving the living wage discussion to the end of the agenda. No other reason than that, no.
I'll object.
Okay.
I'd like to object as well.
Okay. We'll take a roll call vote. If you vote aye, then you will amend the agenda. If you vote no, we will not. A majority will rule. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask a follow-up question.
Uh-huh.
I don't want to get too much into the weeds with any personal staff requests, but just want to seek clarification, a little compassion with staff. I understand that sometimes other obligations might come up for a staff member who works many evenings, and I'm wondering if that might be the nature of requests, that we can be compassionate to a staff member who might have requested, or if might be kind of in that wheelhouse, understanding that things come up, people work a lot of hours, and maybe this is accommodating to something like that, without getting into anybody's personal business.
I'm not sure that you want to answer that, Mr. Peters, but...
I would say that's part of it, but not entirely.
Councilmember Worthman?
If I may ask a follow-up, just about how did -- so I can better understand why -- what changed between when the agenda was put together on Friday -- or sorry, on Friday or Wednesday?
Excuse me, the chair will exercise her prerogative and remove my request. The agenda stands as printed. We will begin with item number one, then, which is a public hearing. Item number one starts our public hearings, the first of two, on a proposed ordinance rezoning properties located on the west side of Mary Place, south of Renee Drive, from TR, Temporary 1A to R2, for some existing duplexes. Mr. Tufti?
These are the properties in the Mill Run subdivision out on the northwest side of the city off of Mary Place. And you'll note the surrounding zoning is mostly R2. And there's an aerial photo, it's six lots. There are -- there were six duplexes on the property. This one burned, and they need a building permit to rebuild, and that's the reason for the request to rezone these properties to R2. And you'll note the surrounding properties are, again, mostly duplexes. The comprehensive plan identifies the areas being appropriate for low-density residential development, which does include duplexes and R2 zoning by definition, and the Plan Commission's recommended approval.
Questions for Mr. Tufti? I see none, thank you. Are there members of the public who arrived tonight to speak to this proposed rezoning? Anyone here for this item? Seeing none, the chair will close item one. Item two is a public hearing on a proposed resolution authorizing the vacation of a portion of Old Town Hall Road from Lorch Avenue to the southerly I-94 right-of-way. Mr. Solberg?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This resolution is proposed to authorize a vacation of a portion of Old Town Hall Road on the city's south side. Here is an aerial picture of Old Town Hall Road. Comes through currently like this. This is Lorch Avenue, Highway 93, and Interstate 94. You have a map in your council packet of the area being vacated. This area is part of a recent annexation and a rezoning and a proposed development on the city's south side. As part of the development and the rezoning and annexation, we have an opportunity to relocate Old Town Hall Road further back from the intersection at Lorch Avenue, and have a safer, larger, better intersection at Lorch, as well as better capacity on Old Town Hall Road. This shows what will most likely be occurring in the not-too-distant future out there. This area here is existing town hall, Old Town Hall Road, and this is the right-of-way that will be dedicated in the near future for a new Old Town Hall Road. So the portion of Old Town Hall Road that will no longer be in existence is being proposed to be vacated, and then a new Old Town Hall Road will be constructed easterly, providing a safer intersection and then room for growth on the south side of Eau Claire. The vacation was presented to the Plan Commission and recommended for approval, and staff recommends approval as well. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Solberg? I see none, thank you. Are there any members of the public who came tonight to speak about the vacation of this road? Item two? Seeing none, the chair will close item two, which opens up two public discussions, the first of which is a public discussion on the proposed ordinance amending Title III of the city code entitled Revenue and Finance by creating Chapter 3.40 entitled L Living Wage. Mr. Wincens?
Thank you, Council President Kincaid and City Council. Before you this evening is a public discussion concerning a proposed living wage ordinance. This proposal, or I should say, the concept of a living wage ordinance was originally brought forward by Councilmembers Worthman and Emanuel for a pre-legislative discussion that occurred earlier this year. Wisconsin statute does preempt the establishment of a minimum wage in most areas, but there are three areas carved out in the statute where cities and counties are still allowed to establish minimum wages, or what we're calling this evening a living wage. Those ordinances can apply to employees of the city or county. They can apply to contracts for provision of services to the city or to a county, and they can apply to employees who perform work funded by financial assistance from the city. So these are three categories that are permitted under state statute. There are five jurisdictions in the state of Wisconsin that have living wage ordinances: the city of Madison, Dane County, the city of Milwaukee, Milwaukee County, and Eau Claire County. So back on November 22nd of 2016, we conducted the pre-legislative discussion concerning this matter. And at that time, there was consensus on the part of the city council to move forward with the establishment of a living wage ordinance. At the pre-legislative discussion, we didn't decide on any of the parameters for that ordinance, but rather scheduled further discussions that occurred during work sessions on February 28th of 2017, as well as May 9th of 2017. Issues that the city council addressed during those work sessions concerned what we would establish as a wage rate to be considered a living wage, which employees of the city would be covered under a living wage ordinance, whether or not contracts would be covered as part of our living wage ordinance, and whether or not the recipients of -- or those who work on projects that receive financial assistance would be covered under our living wage ordinance. Following that last work session, there appeared to be consensus around two particular matters related to the living wage. The first was that living wage would be established at $12.27 per hour. This was based on a self-sufficiency standard for Wisconsin published by the Department of Workforce Development, and that standard was for Eau Claire County and was for a four-member family with two adults, one preschool child, and one school-aged child. There also seemed to be consensus that it would apply to employees who work for the city for more than -- or three months or more out of the year, and also that those employees would need to work 20 hours or more per week when they work in order to be eligible. So staff, based upon the feedback that we received from the city council, staff went about developing a proposed ordinance. And that ordinance is before you this evening for public discussion and will be before you tomorrow afternoon for consideration. The cost impact of the proposed ordinance, based upon 2016 payroll data, is that it would affect a total of 22 employees at a cost of approximately $30,000 per year. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions for Mr. Wincens? I see no --
Councilmember?
Oh.
Sorry.
Mr. Wincens, pardon me. I apologize for the late light. Mr. Worthman has a question.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mr. Wincens, for all of the work on this. I know it's been many months and probably learned a lot about living wage. I think I wanted to get a sense first from you, is this ordinance that we're seeing tomorrow, this is the recommendation from your department or from city staff, that this is the best way for us to proceed?
No, this does not represent staff's recommendation. This represents, at least from what we observed, to be the consensus of the city council, based upon the last work session. So we took that information and crafted an ordinance around that, but we're not making any particular recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. Mr. Wincens, the $12.27 that came from Department of Workforce Development, do they factor that in a family for full-time wages, or have they factored that for part-time workers, or is it just that's just the wage is the wage? Is that...
As I recall, that was a -- would have been a family with one of the two adults working full-time and the other working part-time.
So do they determine a wage for a living wage for part-time workers, or don't they do that?
Well, the $12.27, I guess, represents what each of those individuals, those adult members of the household, would need to make in order for that household to have an income sufficient to pay a number of different bills that were associated as part of that study included housing, childcare, food, transportation, health care, miscellaneous expenses, taxes and tax credit, and emergency savings. So that was the amount that the household needed to cover those basic household expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Wincens or maybe the city manager. Just a small, yet I think important clarification about the subsequent work sessions. I think there's an important distinction between the pre-legislative discussion and a work session. And if it's my understanding, Tuesday, November 22nd, was a pre-legislative discussion, and then it was publicly noticed that we were having a work session on February 28th and May 9th. Does that seem accurate?
That, I believe that is accurate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Wincens, one of the things that has been talked about and was originally proposed by myself and Councilmember Emanuel was the ordinance applying to contracts that the city has. And as you know, some of those contracts, including our paratransit service is a shared service with our county. How do you think or see if the ordinance is passed tomorrow, the lack of us following the lead of the county might impact the contract renewal for paratransit service, for example?
Well, it's certainly difficult for me to predict that. I do know that we are working on an extension of that contract, but I would presume that when the provider of that contract is providing paratransit services for the county or for county residents, that they would be required to pay their drivers that amount established as the living wage, whereas when they're providing paratransit services to city of Eau Claire residents, unless the living wage ordinance passes, they would not be required to pay that living wage amount. Or if there were different amounts, they would have to keep track of those different amounts as well.
Councilmember Strobel?
Maybe as a follow-up to that, I guess I never thought about the shared uses that the city and the county have. The county recently was unable to get a bidder for their Meals on Wheels. What if that same thing happened on the shared transit service? How would the city -- what would we do in that situation?
Well, I think that there would be a couple options available to that with that. There is a -- I know that the county has an opt-out option within their ordinance that allows the county board to waive the living wage requirement. Or if that wasn't an option and no bidders came forward to provide the paratransit services, then that would be something that we would have to look at bringing in-house, similar to what the county has done with the Meals on Wheels program. Of course, there's a significant capital investment in starting up a paratransit service, but I believe we're required to provide that service.
I see no further questions for sure this time. Now would be the time that we can receive public input on this item, and I would invite the first person to approach the podium and state your thoughts.
Good evening. My name is Nick Smire. I live at 320 Broadway Street. I am county board supervisor for District 15, which is approximately the Randall Park neighborhood, and I also sit on Budget and Finance Committee. I'm the author of the Living Wage Ordinance for the county, and I would like to offer some comments this evening. The county ordinance began around the same time that we did a comprehensive survey of our wage structure, so they paralleled each other. The wage analysis was done on the basis of the need for uniformity and social justice or fairness to all the staff and market, whatever the market value was of the positions. The Living Wage Ordinance came out of a concern because the state legislature, as you know, has prohibited municipalities and counties from raising minimum wage, and our hope was that if we tie a Living Wage Ordinance in the county to our contracts, that would leverage the so-called minimum wage. You had a discussion a few minutes ago about the -- how you define living wage, and that's certainly a very complicated process. What we decided to do was to use the federal threshold of income for a family of four, not a family of two, but a family of four, and then add a percent to it, increasing that each year, indexing the living wage that we were requiring to the federal, I'll call it the poverty level, plus that percentage, so that in five years, it would reach approximately $15 an hour. But it would still be indexed, so it would continue to rise as that threshold grows. I'm a little puzzled by the proposal that the city is making. I'm wondering why you're not just calling that a wage increase and taking a look at requiring that your contractors meet a living wage standard. There was really no need to have a Living Wage Ordinance for your own staff. That should take place in your wage considerations. I just think you may be spinning your wheels. If you call it a Living Wage Ordinance now, something that applies to the wage and salaries -- the salaries, I'm sorry, the wages of 22 persons, that's going to limit any future discussion of living wage and may preclude the city from doing something to advocate for an increase in what we'll call the minimum wage, or I like to call the living wage. So my recommendation to you is table it or withdraw the proposal and make a proposal for wage increase. I certainly would not want to stand in the way of raising wages for 22 persons. I think that's a fair thing to do. They probably are paid less than they should be paid anyway, and I'm always for wage increase. I see my green light is still on, and I have 10 seconds, apparently, eight seconds. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any questions. I certainly would like to be a resource for you on this discussion of living wage. It was a long and bumpy process for us.
Thank you, Mr. Smire. Councilmember Tiwold has a question, right here.
Thank you, Council President. In reference to your ordinance, do you have indexing across all employees, then? So for all full-time, all part-time?
The Living Wage Ordinance applies to contracts with the county.
Okay.
Our wage review and our wage structure now applies to all staff. We employed an outside consulting firm that helped us to classify jobs and to determine the market value of jobs, and then created a completely new structure for wages, which automatically adjusts...
So within that structure, then...
No, we're talking about the wage structure, not the living wage ordinance.
Right. Within the wage structure, there's no one below said minimum living wage?
That's correct.
Correct?
That's correct.
And then within that same structure, all employees are indexed each year?
Yes.
Has there been an impact on cost to do that?
Well, yes, that increases costs if you're increasing -- if you're indexing.
Right, so is -- were there additional revenues, or is it elimination of services, or how does that get funded?
Through creation of efficiencies, reclassification of some positions, restructuring of some departments, a combination of all of those things. A very difficult thing to do, but it's been done, and it will continue to be done. That discussion goes on continuously in Budget and Finance.
Okay, thank you.
It's a -- excuse me, it's a common question. The biggest question in regard to the Living Wage Ordinance was can we afford it in terms of our contracts? And the answer that we have now, that we have so many months under our belt, is yes. It is working.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smire. I see no further questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Dave Minor. I'm the new president and CEO for the Eau Claire Chamber. I'm going to let Scott talk about the chamber's position, because he's the one who's shepherded through the process. I just wanted to introduce myself to all of you, and several of you I've had an opportunity to meet and sit and talk. I hope over the next 30 to 60 days, I can have an opportunity to have coffee or lunch with each and every one of you to continue to build a relationship that the chamber has. Again, to remind you, we are an organization of over 1,200 members, over 30,000 employees in this area. So again, I just wanted to simply introduce myself and thank you for all that you do for this community and look to continue to build on that working relationship that we've had in the past.
Well, good evening, council members.
Well, good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Scott Rogers. I'm the Governmental Affairs and Workforce Director at the Chamber. And each of you did receive a letter signed by our Chair, Board Chair, Tim Benedict, on behalf of our Board of Directors about this issue. So I just wanted to speak to that briefly and mention three things that we primarily wanted to convey on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. One, we did want to commend you for the process that you've undertaken to look at this issue. We did attend and, and listen to all three of the sessions where you wrestled with the costs, benefits, potential consequences, and we want to commend you for that process. We also recognize that it's a reasonable exercise of the city's management of its own employees to pass the resolution, the ordinance that's before you for tomorrow. The Chamber does not believe that the ordinance should go beyond the city's own employees and should not extend to service contractors or work funded by city financial assistance. We believe that that would not be a prudent use of limited tax dollars. We believe it would impose onerous compliance requirements on contractors doing business with the city and may make that less attractive. And it is a situation in our community now with our low unemployment rate, that there are many career-level employment opportunities available to people who need a living wage. And we want to encourage people to get the training and experience that will successfully lead them to those career opportunities, so those are available to them now. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Rogers? Thank you both. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Jeff Smith. I am with Citizen Action Organizing Cooperative of Western Wisconsin. I'm the lead organizer. We have been very active and very loud about how we support living wages for all workers in the state of Wisconsin and everywhere we go. We worked hard on, with Mr. Smire and others in the county to do all we could to support that Living Wage passage there, and we'd like to see the same thing happen with the city and all across Wisconsin. It is a tedious task, considering that the state has, does not do it at the state level, and we know it's going to be municipality by municipality. And I appreciate all that you do, and having been elected official, as you, most of you know, I know where you're coming from and what difficult jobs you have to listen to all of us and weigh all those factors. But I want to be clear that we don't really think the proposal before you today is actually a Living Wage Ordinance. If it does not cover all employees and all contracts, it is not really truly a Living Wage Ordinance. We appreciate and really want to support raising wages for 22 part-time employees. We really believe that's important, and they deserve that. But in this case, we're really concerned that if you use the term Living Wage Ordinance, as Mr. Smire has already indicated, it'll be very difficult to revisit and do the right thing down the road and raise wages for everyone involved that you, that are paying paid by taxes. And I think it is actually a responsibility of the city to be sure that you're not actually endorsing poverty by paying such low wages or paying contractors pay such low wages that people are having to go out and get a second job, or they're not able to, or they're having to make terrible choices between whether they can pay for their children's activities or they have, or they have to buy groceries, or they have to pay for their pharmaceuticals, or they can't afford to pay their car payment this month. I mean, those sorts of choices are real, and they're genuine choices that a lot of people have to make, and yet they're working full-time. What I've found that anyone who, anyone has the common sense to believe that anybody who works full-time should already be paying paid living wages. That's expected. So let us, as a city, take the lead and be sure that what all the dollars that the city spends is being leveraged into living wages for all workers, whether it be contractors or, or direct employees. And I appreciate you listening to all of us tonight, and I hope there will be more comments that you're going to hear from, from people on this subject, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Nick Novak. I reside at 210 Ferry Street in Eau Claire's Shawtown neighborhood. I have heard arguments that Eau Claire cannot raise revenue to pay for increased wages, the result of state-imposed spending restraints. However, I have read the U.S. Constitution and Wisconsin's Constitution to boot just last night, in fact, again, and I find no language in either document prohibiting local governments from exercising their economic authority for the benefit of their citizens. To the contrary, a government of, by, and for the people may always choose to do what is best for their people's interest. It is conservative and good to exercise local power. It is liberal and good to welcome more of our friends and neighbors into a community which respects economic self-sufficiency and economic dignity. I would like Eau Claire to pass a $15 an hour minimum wage, a living wage. I would like Eau Claire, my city, to work with other municipalities, other governments, local, state, and federal, to redistribute money and resources to those with less. Practicing demand-side economics is not only moral, it is the best, most practical way to support our families and our communities in the short and long terms. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. I see no questions for you. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, Jeremy Greger at 451 Lincoln Avenue. I was, I guess this process has, has come to an opportunity for the public to be involved, and I appreciate that. Obviously, it's been a lot of work internally within the city and within your work sessions on the council and staff to determine what felt like a consensus. I know that a lot of things that come in front of you are not boiled down to that degree. And I was a little surprised to see this, the proposal come without the kind of ambition that I was expecting it to, when you look at the leadership we've seen from the county and a lot of what the initial proposals were about this, this ordinance, on, in being referred to as a Living Wage Ordinance by the, the folks that introduced it, but yet when it comes to you tonight, it is far from that. So I would, I would like to see some amendments or some way of having this come back to you that, that really moves beyond those 22 workers who obviously we should support in this way. One specific area that I'd like to support is that it, it include contracted workers that we, we hire their services to, to help the people in our city. One of the, one of the examples that I think is most important that the county really struggled with, but ultimately I think made a good choice on is, is the, the paratransit services that, that many folks rely on in the community, and they really, we really do get the kind of value of paying those workers. We get those, that value returned to us in terms of the quality of the services. When you look at the bus drivers that we have with the City of Eau Claire who are public employees who drive our Eau Claire Transit buses, if, to have the kind of quality that we currently have from the, from those important drivers, if we had that in the, in, in paratransit service, I think people would really appreciate that change because in the past, we've had a lot of discussions about, within the arena of paratransit, that there's been a lot of complaints about, you know, the quality of the service, and I think we could really improve that if, if the people who are working as the drivers had more stability in their lives and were not having to struggle on low wages. So that's just one example that I think is very important, and as a board member of the Chippewa Valley Transit Alliance is something we've talked about as an advocacy group for public transit riders. And I hope this ordinance can be strengthened through amendments to be able to reflect some of the ambition and, and, and leadership we've seen from the county. So, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Greger. I see no questions for you tonight.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Emily Anderson. I live at 4334 Heartland Drive. And I was noticing when I was waiting for the meeting to start, the motto, "Eau Claire Works." And I thought, you know, looking around, it really does, right? We have all of these elected representatives listening to the people that are here talking. We have different constituencies with different interests having a civil conversation, and that made me really happy. But one of the things I keep thinking about is if, if Eau Claire works, what does it mean for it to work, and who are we when it comes to work? Are we a place where Eau Claire works but still can't pay the rent? Are we a place where Eau Claire works until their car breaks down and they lose their job because they can't get to work? Because working people are facing poverty in our town, and I think that this amendment needs to be strengthened, so we're doing everything that we can to make sure that people who work are compensated appropriately, are paid a living wage. And I think that if we extend this to contractors and anyone that our taxes subsidize their work, that might potentially drive up wages in the private sector as well. So I'm encouraging you to please think about expanding and strengthening this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Oh, and please feel comfortable. Anyone else? Anyone else? The chair will just ask one more time. Does anyone else wish to speak to the ordinance tonight? Seeing none, we will close. Item three. Sure? We do have a decision point tomorrow afternoon at our legislative session, which convenes in this room at 4:00 P.M. Thank you for yet another civil discussion in our city. Item four on our agenda is a discussion on proposed ordinance amending Title 10 of the Code Entitled Vehicles and Traffic and the Table sections related to parking restrictions, enforcement, and meter changes. Mr. Silver?
We have a number of changes that we are proposing, centered around parking. There are some enforcement and meter changes also included with it. But I'll go through if it's, if it suits the Council President. I'll discuss parking lots, and then I'll move through the sections and all questions after. Try to go in an orderly fashion with that.
I want to say the packet was really well put together.
Oh, thank you.
The map and the color coding and walked us through, so congratulations to you.
Our transportation engineer is, does a very, very good job with helping.
Yes, I can see that. I can see her work.
We're passionate about parking and trying to, trying to actually make it better from where we were a couple of years ago. So it is a lot of work. It's a lengthy packet, lengthy inclusion, but there's a lot of very important things tonight. So the first, the first part that I would like to talk about are related to parking lots. We have the Seaver Street Lot that's located south of Lake Street, on the southern side of the South Barstow Bid, and the Schlegel Milch McDaniel Lot that's located on the corner of Lake and Farwell Street. The proposal for the Seaver Street Lot is generated mostly due to the inclusion of a new business in the vicinity of the parking lot. Currently, the Seaver Street Lot provides parking for 39 permitted guests from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 P.M., Monday through Friday, and then free parking in the evening and free parking on weekends. During the daytime, it's only available from 7:00 to 5:00 for somebody who possesses a municipal permit. So if you're visiting Wilson Park or any other location during the daytime, it's not open for public parking, only, only permitted parking. Business moved in and inquired about using the Seaver Street Lot to provide parking services for their constituents that typically frequent their business for an hour or two hours at a time. So what we are proposing is to install meters in the Seaver Street Lot, the same way that they're installed in the Transfer Center Lot and the Railroad Lot. So every parking space will be installed with one of the electronic meters that we recently removed from our on-street parking. And if you are a current permit holder of a municipal permit, you can park in any one of those spots. If you do not have a permit and you wish to park in this spot, then you would pay 25 cents per hour, and you would be able to park in the Seaver Street Lot. There are 39 parking spaces, and we did three counts for the number of users, and it averages about a little over six people per day using that. So it's an underutilized parking, parking lot, and we believe that offering that flexibility for some hourly parking will be within the capacity of the parking and also provide that service in the area. The parking meters will be enforced the same as all of the other parking meters in lots, so the enforcement will be 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 P.M. Monday through, or seven days a week. So if there's a meter there during those hours, even if it's on a weekend, you would still need to pay in, in that parking lot. The second parking lot change deals with Schlegel Milch McDaniel Lot, and this recommendation is being presented with the, in, in chorus with some of the recommendations from the downtown parking study, which in a, in a, in a shortened explanation stated that downtown parking that is not seen as desirable or as convenient to the hub of the activity in, around the Barstow Street District should be, should provide available parking for a longer duration than the on-street parking immediately adjacent and most convenient to the businesses, and it should be at a reduced fee or a, or no fee. Schlegel Milch is not generally considered to be an overly desirable parking lot due to its location and its distance from Barstow Street. So we are proposing to have it free 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So if you do wish to come downtown and frequent the businesses and don't mind walking a few blocks to either attend a movie or a theater when it opens, or go to the library, you can come down, you could park in the parking lot all day, throw your bike on, and you wouldn't have to worry about time constraints or paying a fee for that. Currently, there are 93 quarterly pass holders for the Schlegel Milch Lot. It has a capacity of 162. So if it went to free, there would be the, the addition of 70 parking spaces in the downtown area that would not have a time restriction or a fee associated with it for the surface parking spot, or parking lot. Both proposals were presented to the South Barstow Bid and DEKI, and they approved both, both proposals from staff. Any questions on these? And I'll have time at the end also. The next, the next changes being proposed are to remove the time restrictions on South Dewey Street from Grand Avenue to Amory Street, and East Grand Avenue from Dewey Street to Doty Street. Again, with the parking, with recommendations from the parking study, these on-street parking spaces are not seen as desirable as the other downtown locations across from Barstow Street. So again, not, not as sought-after parking, should have longer durations and more flexibility and a reduced fee than the more convenient spaces. So for the same reason we're, why we are recommending the Schlegel Milch Lot become free, we're looking at removing the hourly restrictions, the two-hour parking from these locations, and allowing greater occupancy times for the street for parking in these locations. This proposal was presented to the bid in DEKI also and approved. The third change for on-street parking includes the signage of handicap parking stalls, on-street handicap parking stalls, one at the intersection of Eau Claire Street and Barstow Street. Is shown in this location here, adjacent to the LSS offices across the street from Haymarket Landing. The second location is on Wisconsin Street by the Mung Mutual Assistance Association, and this would be an angled parking spot. and this would be an angled parking spot here, and again, it would show up on this picture in this location. And the third request for an on-street handicapped accessible parking location would be by the St. Pat's Parish Office, and it would be in the location occupied by this black car adjacent to their ADA accessible curb ramp. When we get, we do get a number of requests for ADA and handicapped accessible on-street parking. There are handful throughout the downtown area. We're very judicious when reviewing the spots to see if they can provide the same parking within their own establishments, if they have their own parking lots, or adjacent on-street parking that is privately owned as in Phoenix Park. If they can't provide it for themselves, we look to see if there are public lots, surface lots. All of our city's surface lots provide ADA accessible parking or assigned parking spots. If there are no public surface parking lots and they can't accommodate it themselves, we look at these spots and then present the request to the city council for approval. In all of these locations, when we reviewed them, it was not, it was not practical and feasible to provide handicap parking for the patrons of those businesses or even adjacent businesses without signing a spot on the street. For that, we are bringing this proposal forward for the council to consider. Generally speaking, guidelines, parking guidelines that we have found recommend about 2% of on-street parking spots within municipalities could be signed ADA parking or handicap available parking. These parking would, if approved, these spots would bring the number up to 18 in the city, and it's, it would be well less than the 2% citywide in the downtown area. For that, we're presenting them to the council for consideration tonight. Any questions?
Are you okay with that question?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. We talked about this earlier. There's about 18 in the city, and I don't have a problem necessarily with any of these or where they might be. My concern is the policy. If we have a firm policy on how many we will allow, who we will allow them for, what happens when that particular business that requested it is no longer there in business? Do we have a policy to follow up on that so that we're removing these spots as well? Because I could see a lot of other downtown businesses requesting on-street ADA spots, and I guess that's, that's a little bit of the concern I have if we don't have something firm and fair that we can apply to everybody that requests.
So the first part of the question with a firm policy and a firm number, we don't have a set quota that we, you know, we're going to stay below 30 in the downtown area or 20 or so forth. So we look at it to see if they can accommodate it in other ways and try and have some flexibility for, if there is no other option, then at least pursue to see if it's on the street. The parking spaces wouldn't be the sole ownership of the adjacent business that would request it. So in the location on O'Clare Street, it was requested from an adjacent business, but it wouldn't provide ADA accessible parking locations for businesses that may be located across the street on Haymarket Landing. I guess it's our thought in the downtown area that the businesses are going to be concerned enough with all of the experience we've had with on-street parking in the last three years that the on-street parking spaces are an extremely high premium for down there. There aren't a lot of those in the South Barstow District. I believe there are six throughout the entire district where there are over 400 on-street parking locations. So if this business were to move, there certainly would be the opportunity to revisit it. However, with the threshold of, you know, around 2% in a growing downtown area, I think at least that's a good guideline and somewhat of a parking standard that it would still provide service if you go around the corner on Barstow Street. But that was a concern that we did have if you have somebody requesting two or three or four for a specific, if there's a mobility-centric business that are going in downtown. But so far, the requests we've had have been for one sporadically, primarily dealing with the clientele that would use it at those businesses.
Okay, thank you.
More? Okay. So the, the next, the next restrictions deal with removing on-street parking. So there would be a prohibition of parking in locations for primarily safety improvement reasons. The first include the intersection of North Dewey Street and Galloway Street. Galloway Street was recently reconstructed. This is the old view of that. And the spots being proposed for prohibition of parking are two parking spots in this location. As you approach Dewey, Galloway Street, when you're on Dewey Street and you stop at this location and you look to the left with the people in motor sets are leaving the North Barstow Ramp and leaving, utilizing Galloway Street as a way out of downtown, your vision is blocked by vehicles parked in these two locations. Restricting parking on two adjacent parking spots, this is a, this is a picture of sitting in a car. This is one car, one spot that would be removed. You cannot see the cars coming behind it, and traffic's increasing at that intersection year after year. So the MPO maintains a list of the 30 most dangerous intersections in the, in the MPO area. This intersection is not on the list yet, but we're trying to be proactive as the traffic increases to make sure that we do not have a safety problem at this intersection in the future. This is the most inexpensive, fastest route to have a safety improvement without spending money on a geometric change or a, any kind of change in the way the physical operation of the intersection operates. This was presented to the North Barstow Bid. They, they supported it, but they supported the restriction of only one parking space instead of two. So that would be an approximately one space right here, and the second space gets into the vision triangles that you see with the little piece of engineering art that we included in the packet. And those are safety triangles for an intersection. Any questions with this? The next restriction is in the Third Ward, and this centers around one of the gateways into the Third Ward from the, from the outlying districts. And the proposal is to restrict parking along the southwest side of Farwell Street and the west side of Farwell Street from Washington Street up to Summit Street. Currently, in the Third Ward, it's very frequent and very common. This is our parking, these are the parking maps for the Third Ward with basically a red line including no parking. So as you come into the Third Ward along McKinley, along Garfield, Summit, and Gilbert, there are parking restrictions on one side of the street. The street west range from 28 feet to 34 feet. Farwell Street does not have this restriction, and in fact, this restriction between Gilbert and Summit is, is not supported by ordinance, although it is in our GIS map. So the proposal that we're having is to extend the prohibition of parking along the south and west side of Farwell Street from Washington Street to Summit Avenue. We discussed this with the Neighborhood Association. At the time, the Neighborhood Association took a vote on the proposal. We did not have it finalized whether it was going to be the southwest side or the northeast side. They supported restricting parking on either side and had expressed an interest to share their opinion with the proposal at the hearing tonight, once the final decision was made. We opted for the southeast, or southwest in the west side, because as you come from the downtown area, the drive lanes, when you're entering the Third Ward on this location, are over to the east side, and then you do have parking once you, once you get to this side of the block for Farwell Street. So we felt for consistency, when you're coming around, it would be a safer, safer situation to have the parking prohibited on this side until you get further into the neighborhoods and speed slow down. There was feedback regarding Jefferson Street. Residents felt that it would be better to prohibit parking on the other side because of sight distance when you come down on Jefferson Street. If the cars were removed, you would have better sight distance up and down. We're doing a speed study or a traffic study right now. Jefferson Street traffic could potentially next year be significantly changed, not knowing what route that will go. That was another factor that led into recommending this side of Farwell Street for the prohibition. Along with that, in the, in the Third Ward, there are a number of parking prohibitions in the vicinity of McKinley and Roosevelt Avenue. We're proposing parking by ordinance be restricted in this area denoted by the red radius. It's currently signed, no parking, but it's not supported by the ordinance language to make it official. Here is our GIS map, and it shows the parking prohibitions in our GIS system, but it did not include this location here. So the traffic is very constrained around this location with the island. So we saw it in ordinance cleanup. Will you two include this area that's already signed as parking to be, or no parking to be included as no parking in the ordinance? And we did have another discussion with the neighborhood about a radius here extending it, but that was already included in the ordinance. It just wasn't signed, so we'll be installing a few extra signs to make the street compliant with what the ordinance says. Any questions? No? Okay. And then there are two more locations for no parking to be proposed. The, there's one more, and it's on Forest Street, up here from Sarah Street to the north where the overpasses for the railroad tracks firmly crossed Forest Street and the High Bridge Trail begins. This area is in the vicinity of our central maintenance facility. There's a lot of buses, trucks, heavy machinery. It's signed as no parking currently, and we're seeking an ordinance change to include that area as no parking as well. There aren't a lot of requests for parking in that area anyway, so we, we're seeking to amend the ordinance to reflect the current signage for that. Okay, this is going pretty fast for parking.
A council member with Vanessa.
Yes.
Mr. Silver, did you address Summer Street? That's a street that it, that can become very narrow. I know that there used to be a trolley line there that ended at a certain block on Summer, and beyond that point, it's, you can barely fit two car, barely fit one car through sometimes when there's parking on both sides. And I know a lot of people have, you know, sometimes nicked other cars and things like that going through.
And we did not address it with this round of parking changes, but we can add it to the list for the next time. We're trying to consolidate our parking changes instead of bringing one or two a month to try and bring more at one time and reduce the number of council meetings that have the parking items on those, but we can add it to the list.
That may be an East Hill ordinance or something. Well, thank you.
And then another request in the Third Ward stems from, if I can find the, a number of years ago, an ordinance change was enacted to restrict the clearances around driveways in the yellow, in the yellow portion of the area. So the ordinance change at that time was to expand the clearances instead of four feet from the end of a driveway to eight feet. And those additional clearances are marked by a white line on the pavement and then an accompanying sign in the yards. At the time the yellow was passed, there was talk that if you restrict parking, because four additional feet is 20% of a parking space, so you're, in essence, reducing the parking availability by, you know, approximately 20% here, that it would push that parking demand out into the green areas or out further beyond the original, the boundary. The commitment was made at that time to revisit it at some point in the future, so we did over the last year. And with staff driving through here, noticed that these areas had similar parking patterns to the area in the yellow, and then it tapered off as you, as you got further away from the main parking demand. We went to the Third Ward Neighborhood Association, and there was some discussion among the residents to extend it all the way out to Drummond Street and up to Gilbert. After some internal discussions with the neighborhood, we went back to the meeting, and they ended up endorsing our original proposal to expand those restrictions out to the green. So it doesn't change much. It just adds an extra four feet at the, on either side of the driveway for eight feet of clearance for additional safety, and it also makes it easier to back out, would reduce the risk of potentially having a minor accident with a parked car. The Neighborhood Association did endorse the staff recommendation at the time. If approved by council, the painting and the signs would start as soon as possible, hopefully sometime this week, to try and beat as much of the students moving back as possible. Any questions with that? Then the last item just removes the mention of two recently vacated sections of City Street in the university. This section of Garfield and this section of Roosevelt were recently vacated, so it simply removes the mention of those blocks from our parking tables since they are now on the university property. With that, I'll take any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. I see no questions. Very thorough presentation as always.
Thank you for your patience with all of the items.
Sure. Are there members of the public who came to express an opinion about these parking changes?
Good evening. My name is Steve Harmon. I'm the owner of property at 705 South Barstow, and I'm addressing the council in regards to the parking lot on Seaver and Barstow. And we'd like to say we support the city engineer's recommendation to make that metered. I've owned that building for 24 years, and during that period of time, I could see a change from businesses in the area that were high employee-based to now businesses that are few employees but a lot of customers. So to find street parking is really handicapping the businesses in that area. There isn't that much street parking, and it's difficult for them. So this will really help not just rent or I have in my property, but also adjoining properties as well. Thank you. Is there any questions?
I see no questions, but thank you for your input, Mr. Harmon. It helps us. Thank you.
Yeah, he had some nice, I'm Jim Happner, and I live at 1767 Drummond Street, and he had some nice maps there that I could actually have used, but.
He'll help you find.
Yeah, oh, I did, thanks. Yeah. I was just trying to show, I like that area. Yeah, great, super. That's it. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, and I probably should have attended the Third Ward Neighborhood Association meeting. I did not, but I did notice the stakes that were positioned right by my property here. If this is correct here, then we have Russ Street, yes, and Coolish Court. And there is not supposed to be any parking there actually, and it looked like they're going to put in a post, a sign. I don't think that's necessary. So, and also, I don't think it's really necessary. I don't have that much traffic down here with the students or any congestion problems, so say the city have a little bit of money perhaps. The only problem I did have was when a Trump supporter last October drove up my lawn and parked during the rally. But otherwise, I don't have any trouble with the parking there, so I just wanted to voice that.
Can, so you're just saying there's already no parking in front of your street, in front of your house?
This, this area, this adjoining between Coolish Court and Russ is so narrow, there's not supposed to be any parking there. So there should not.
You want it to remain that way?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And there should not be a sign then because of that. I've seen students take it in, unfortunately, I feel sorry for them, but it's a narrow street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I'm Dennis Franco. I live at 1751 Drummond Street and I've lived there since 1991. Really, this proposal of the signs along Frederick and Drummond really aren't necessary. Student parking is really not an issue on Drummond or Frederick and most, most of the on-street parking is the neighborhoods and neighborhood people and occasionally they'll have a party or something where we get a lot of cars parked, but it's really not, not an issue. As Jim said, the only car that I generally see parked on Coolidge there is the US Postal guy parks there, you know? But most of the time, there's a very minimal student parking there and I really don't see the requirement. I don't see that it's necessary. The Neighborhood Association passed out a questionnaire which they gave to all the neighbors and I talked to Tim Lane and he said that, you know, he would, you know, get our concerns that we, you know, we don't need these signs and lines down there. It's not an issue. But apparently, they went ahead and advocated it anyway, so I don't think it's necessary in that area. It's really all right.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Sherri Baimer, 4913 River Glen Court. I am the tenant of Steve's that originally requested the change in the Seaver-Barstow Street parking lot. I offer a lot of services that are longer than two hours and there's only two-hour parking, so if you consider the parking meters and then can have them, you know, maybe be at least four-hour parking, that would be very beneficial for my business, so my clients aren't running out in the middle of winter to quick move their cars. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have?
My name's Dave Chaff and I live at 1740 Drummond Street, so I'm kind of on the corner of Frederick and Drummond and wanted to express a similar opinion to the two previous gentlemen that the proposed signs in that area just really aren't necessary. No one really parks back in that area and for me, there's just a couple of reasons why I'm hoping that we, we don't end up with signs there. One is the fact that there really is no need for them. No one currently parks in that area. If, if anybody does park there, it's really just residents for short periods of time. Another one is kids' safety, so we don't have sidewalks in that stretch of Drummond and so my son and all of their friends are constantly playing football and soccer in the yard and the edge of the yard kind of serves as the edge of the playing field and so I have, I think, four proposed signs going in my yard alone and my neighbor has a couple, so we're worried about them just smacking into these metal signs in, in our yards. You know, aesthetics, it's a small thing, but, you know, with four signs in your yard and two more in your neighbor's yard, I think it's just an aesthetic issue. And again, from a financial perspective, it's just, it seems like it's a, it's a solution looking for a problem because there isn't one right, right at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaff. Oh, council, councilmember Struble has a question for you.
Thank you. Could you point out the area on the map, ready is a little small for us, the Drummond-Frederick area?
Yeah, so this is, wait a minute, that's me. So, and I have a, like a half-circle driveway here, so I think these signs are, they're for the no parking within eight feet of, of driveway signs. So, there's a bunch in my yard, there's some on the Frederick side, some on the Drummond side, as well as kind of extending up here and down Frederick, so, yeah, I mean, they're just, the students really don't turn down Drummond from, from Russ. It's just once you turn onto Drummond, it's just, it's a non, non-issue.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Cal Shown, Carl, formal name. I live at 6080 Inwood Drive in Eau Claire. I own a property at 1251 South Farwell Street. See if I can get this on here so it makes sense. Anyway, there's a little asterisk where the property that I own is. I've had that for over 20 years. It is a rental property and where we've heard some conversation primarily about traffic, I would like to have some commentary about the people that live on this street. This is, this is a, a photograph of the section that goes from Washington to Jefferson. I'm most familiar with that, but I also feel that it extends all the way to Gilbert. And the houses that are there house people that are either students or workers. And oftentimes, there, most of the time, there are unrelated people that live there. Consequently, you end up with more than one vehicle for each household. And putting a restriction of parking along that street is going to really create a congestion problem for the people that live on that street. I came down and visited the engineer here in this building today. There was construction happening outside and it was difficult to find a parking spot. It brought clear to my mind, how is it, how is it to come home from school or from work each day and not be able to find a place to park so that you can go home? And that's a situation that I see is going to take place here. I do see a problem on South Farwell Street between Washington and Jefferson. People drive too fast and there is no part, there is no stop sign at the Jefferson intersection if you're traveling, it's hard on directions there, but if you're traveling from Washington toward Gilbert. And so, sometimes there's a little bit of slowdown, but there's a lot, there's faster traffic. I like to see a four-way stop put at that particular intersection. The letter that came out to us indicated that, that the Neighborhood Association brought this up and then it was supported by the Engineering Department. These pictures here are showing you the intersection. The reason was that, that it creates a visibility problem. I spent some time today and traveled every single intersection from there all the way down to McKinley and I only found two houses that really created a, a bad visibility problem. I photographed some of these from each of the different directions and as you can see, there's, there's visibility going in each of the direction of those houses. What I would like to see happen would either be edit, amend the proposal so that two-way traffic can continue, or two-sided parking can continue all the way to Gilbert. I think the people that live in these houses need some consideration as well and I, I don't see that happening so far in the conversation. Here's, here's a house, this, that house there is actually way down in McKinley, which doesn't, doesn't touch this particular proposal, but the bushes that, at that particular intersection are at least six feet tall and do restrict it. This particular house here is located on Gilbert and I found it interesting that right here, all those bushes are on the boulevard. It's not even on, not even on the property on the other side, the sidewalk. Asking those people to trim their bushes would clear up that problem that I see there. There are a number of signs, they were addressed earlier regarding the type of parking sign that these last people were speaking of and also by the presenter, of what happens on particular properties. I found these on the opposite-sided street of the house that I own where it's already been posted as to where the sign would go and I'm hoping that this isn't a fruitless meeting, that this, it's not just a, a blanketing, that you truly will consider the people that live on that street. I've created some packages, I only had a half a dozen of them, but I will pass them out and leave them with you if you wish to look at these between now and the time that you vote. I'd like to see a no vote on that particular proposal on, or an amendment where you have two-sided parking, particularly from Washington to Jefferson, but I believe it could be good all the way down to, to Gilbert. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shown. I see no questions for you and we did receive a letter at our places, but just a single-page letter prior to the meeting?
Initially, I thought this meeting was tomorrow night and I wasn't going to be able to attend and so I put that together. I found out later, looking closer at a calendar, that it was tonight and quick. So, this has some similar bullet points on the last page. And it has photographs of what I've talked about so far with some commentary at the bottom. Thank you.
You can leave the packets with Ms. Merrill.
There's a half a dozen, so hopefully you can share them.
We share, yep. And thank you for your comments. Okay, any, is anyone else here to? We're talking about some parking changes.
Hi there.
Hi.
My name's Ryan Ring. I currently reside at 1251 South Farwell Street, which is one house, as Cal was explaining, one house away from the intersection of Jefferson Street and South Farwell. I'm also a college student at the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire and was previously on Student Senate, which most of you already know, advocates for student needs both locally, statewide, and nationally. This upcoming year, I'll be living with six other tenants who will also have vehicles on or near South Farwell Street. This is because like myself, I, we live over three hours away, particularly me in Green Bay. Therefore, having a car while going to school is extremely important. Our driveway can only fit two cars at most, therefore, we are forced to park on the street. And I know that's for most of the residencies on South Farwell as well. So, having up to four vehicles on, on just one side of the road would make for very limited and congested parking. There is, in my opinion, a shortage of parking on most of the roads in Eau Claire due to the amount of tenants living in the third ward or the Randall Park District with college students. So, with the proposed one-sided park, street parking on South Farwell, it would restrict ability, restrict ability to park near our residents. Additionally, during the winter months, when the alternative side parking is implemented in the city, it would severely restrict us from parking near or on our residence. This would cause safety concerns when, you know, if I have to park three blocks down the road from where I live with ice and just the cold weather. I've driven on South Farwell near Washington Street and Jefferson and I've had no problem with the width of the road or the visibility due to the current two-sided street parking. I would imagine the other residents on South Farwell would have similar opinions as well. I also have not seen any accidents or altercations due to the current two-sided parking. I believe if this proposal is implemented, it would severely inhibit the excellent quality of life that many people, including myself, enjoy in the city of Eau Claire, especially on South Farwell. So, I would just like to encourage the city council to reconsider the current proposal to the on-street prohibited, or to the one-street prohibited parking on South Farwell Street. And I thank you for your time and consideration. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. You might have a question? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Thanks for your presentation. Thanks for your service too.
Oh, thank you.
The Student Senate. I just wanted to follow up with a question. I believe it's Jefferson Street. Do you find, did you see, do you live on South Farwell?
I, yes, live on South Farwell.
It seems to me that Jefferson Street generally has quite a bit of space for parking as you head toward the Plank Street Hill, which wouldn't be too far from your place, but do you get that same impression that there's a fair amount of parking to be found just a block or so away?
I think so right now, just during the summer months, but I can't say for sure when the students come back to school. I know there's particularly two or three houses living on South Farwell that hold up to five, maybe even six, college students. And if all of them are bringing their cars to, to Eau Claire, you know, that definitely inhibits our kind of space, I guess, on, on the road. So, I think that's a possibility, but I don't know what it's going to look like on Jefferson when the students come back.
Or if there's a change to that street.
Right, exactly.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell. I have a question for Mr. Solberg as a result of this presentation, but not for you.
Oh, okay. All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
The previous, Mr. Shown also brought up the question, alternate side parking during a snow event. Will, will it be the same then on Farwell as it is on Summit Avenue that you, even though parking is prohibited on the east side during a snow event, you can park on that side?
Correct. If this ordinance passed as proposed, then we would seek to include it in that alternate-side parking, ordinance change from last year or the year previous. So, during those snow emergency events, you would be able to flip-flop sides for, during snow removal times for that, so that's our intent for that three-block section.
Thank you. Thank you.
Which one?
Either one.
Either one, all right, that works. My name's Bill Sparks. I reside at 1623 Menominee Street, but also own two properties on Farwell Street, 1246 South Farwell, as well as 1341 South Farwell. You know, when I initially, I was here more for information because what was presented in the packet to us was kind of vague and now that I have a little more information, I still, I guess, I also want to question the wisdom of restricting parking for just one side. The, you know, from Jefferson to Washington and even all the way down from Putnam all the way down to Washington is becoming more and more for desire. It's always been a desirable area to live in, but it is also becoming now, so just with the revitalization of downtown, becoming a more desirable area to live in. We are increasing density down there, no matter what, whether it's for students or just regular professionals that want to live there because they think it's a really cool place in town to live. It's very close to the co-op, it's close to downtown, close to the main activities that are going on down there. So, I think with that increased density, you're going to have to expect that some of the, I guess, the restrictions that have, you know, have been done in the past, I think on one of the maps you said, well, all the different, you know, all the different entering, you know, arteries into the third ward, you know, have this, well, we should have this too because it's not congruent with that. Well, when those were, decisions were made, you know, that was a different time. That was a completely different era, you know, in our city where we didn't have as much going on downtown. And now there is and there's that revitalization and we should increase with, expect with that increased density, that you should also increase the, I guess, the availability of parking. You know, I'm fortunate with my rentals that I don't have a parking issue because most of mine have actually additional parking for all my tenants. But I also come from, you know, where I live on the west side of town, I have no parking on my street, not either side, and then across the street adjacent to me, I also do not have any parking. So, whether we are talking students, whether we are talking just regular people having, you know, you know, some friends over for, for, or events or family, there is no parking when you do that. And when you do that, I think you kind of infringe on, on some of, you know, just normal quality of life and it's definitely something that should be taken into account. And I guess that's all I really have to say. Do I have any questions?
Councilmember Klinkam, there's a question.
Mr. Spark, I appreciate your concern. I guess my question, you're going to have to answer it, even though I would probably like to have addressed it to all of the speakers regarding this Farwell Street.
Fair enough.
If the convenience of having parking on both sides of Farwell in that area come at the cost of a safe street for the people that transit through there, is it worth it?
I will answer your question with another question. And I'm sorry, and this is actually probably more for you, sir, because you know, but one of the questions that I had coming here that haven't been answered is, you know, have studies been done that actually address the safety of that street? Is it, is it unsafe as it is now? You know, have there been parking studies done there and are they, you know, are they more or less than the adjacent arteries coming into the third ward as is? Because if that is the case, well, where's the data to back it up? Same thing with the data as in parking goes. So, if, you know, if there is congestion in parking, how much more congested is it than any other street, again, arteries going into the third ward? As I was coming through here, I actually happen to frequent that way a lot for work as well as just doing things for, for rentals and tenants and so on and so forth. And, you know, today going through there, I think I saw two cars on either side, a ride around the, the corner between Summit and Farwell there, and then a whopping eight cars as I went further down through that district. Now, obviously, it's summer, a lot of students aren't back, it gets a little, you know, it's going to get more congested as it should, you know, as the student population does come back into Eau Claire. Claire. But if safety is truly the issue, then please have, before you actually cite an ordinance and put something in place, please have the data to back that up, and I don't know, sir, if you have that. You know, are there traffic studies? Are there parking studies? Are those things there? Because if they're not, then are we doing it just to do it, to stay congruent with what plan that we put forth? Because if we are, then why do it just to do it without the data to back it up?
Thank you, Mr. Sparks.
Thank you.
I see no further questions. Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. Could we actually have that question answered by Mr. Solberg?
Mr. Solberg?
Whether, I guess my question is now the same as the previous gentleman's question. What sort of safety studies have been done, or do we really know what safety concerns there are there?
We pull crash information for that section of roadway, which is a collector route, and over a five-year period, I believe there are 51 car crashes on that, 56 crashes in that section of roadway. So it is higher than you would expect in a residential neighborhood for that. There are five crashes at miscellaneous intersections, nine crashes at the Farwell-Jefferson intersection, eight crashes at Farwell-Gilbert, three crashes at Farwell-Summit, 31 crashes near the, in the block adjacent to Farwell and Washington where the traffic is getting more congested. The turn lanes are starting to generate at Washington. So there has been 56 crashes over the five-year period that we pulled data for, so.
Councilmember Klinkam?
Mr. Solberg, I have a question unrelated to that section of Farwell. It goes back to the map that shows the expanded area of the driveways in the Third Ward. Was there, at the time that this was discussed, going all the way to Frederick and Lincoln, was it discussed of possibly drawing the line on Rust to Drummond and eliminate that block between Rust and Frederick?
It wasn't. These were the original boundaries that we drew. There wasn't a request by the neighborhood, or we didn't have a request to pull it back. So it wasn't something that we examined to remove Drummond and then Frederick and possibly Lincoln as well at that time.
I try not to come off as an engineer, a traffic engineer especially, so I'm not going to pretend that I am. But I'm fairly familiar with this neighborhood. I used to live down there. Do you see, if this were amended to end at Rust Street, based on whatever information that you have regarding the parking in that area, do you see that as an issue?
I wouldn't see it as an issue. I see with the boundary that's out here that you, there is still the potential to push out with parking as it did from the yellow. So if it were squared off to go down Rust Street and this block were kept out, I would imagine that we will be requested in the, over the next few years, to go out and look at it again to see if we got it right-sized this time. So if it wasn't included at this point, and it was a desire of the council, it would probably be on our radar, because I'm sure we'll be revisiting going out to Drummond and up to Gilbert at some point in the future, just not immediately.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Worthman for Mr. Solberg?
Thank you, Council President. This is a question back to South Farwell. The idea that having parking on both sides is traffic calming in itself, and that potentially by taking traffic away on one side, that it undoes that and that people may travel faster through there, potentially being more unsafe, is that a possibility?
The most effective form of traffic calming, you know, without a physical build, is to have a tightly parked street. You start running into problems, and it works, it works better when you're on a local street. But once you start getting into a collector or an arterial route, then that closely, you're fighting the desire for higher levels of traffic to use that street versus the parkers. So then it creates a safety issue more than it would be on a local street where you have lower volumes of traffic, like, you know, on McKinley or Gilbert, where you're not on one of the main routes out of the neighborhood. So, yeah, it does, it does tend to slow traffic down when you go through the Randall Park neighborhood, when it's heavily parked during business hours. Traffic crawls through there, but most of those are not on the collector routes like you have on Bellinger Street and Fifth, where there is no parking and traffic is allowed to get out. So this is, this proposed on Farwell Street is kind of a compromise between having no parking and having some parking to accommodate the local needs, which is what a collector route falls right in the middle of those two classifications.
Thanks. Yep, I'll just see if anyone else, everyone gets a first chance to speak first. And I'm not sure if there's anyone else to make a comment about these parking changes? Anybody else? And Mr. Sparks?
If I could, I'd just like to come up here and just kind of revisit some of the different crash data you said. You said 56 crashes over five years. What intersections were those were? I know you said one was at Jefferson. There we go.
Right here. So there are data, miscellaneous, and this is in the area.
Right.
Farwell-Jefferson, Farwell-Gilbert, Farwell. And these, the crashes are designated at the closest intersection, so it doesn't mean it's right in the middle of the intersection.
Agreed.
Right.
And I guess if I'm looking at this correctly, you know, the most crashes are at the Farwell-Washington, where it is a main arterial going backwards and forwards, and the second biggest one being, you know, Farwell and Jefferson, which I admit is a very fast intersection. People don't really go it. There is no stop sign there. And if safety is really an issue to slow things down, then let's slow it down. Instead of doing necessarily with parking, do it with a stop sign. You know, have an amendment and put a stop sign at the corners of Farwell and Jefferson that physically limit that speed. It's going to slow it down. People are going to get used to the fact that there's a stop sign up there. I can't just race up to it, slow down, and stop, and then go again. It would, I guess, if we're looking for compromises, I think that would be the best one, because it accomplishes both things. You know, it slows things down while, you know, keeping safety of top priority, but still gives the residents, you know, whether they be students or just regular people, just trying to, you know, have a good quality of life, you know, the parking that they need in order to do so. Questions? Thanks.
I see none. Mr. Sparks, thank you.
Thanks again. I'd just like to reiterate that point. I heard nine accidents. I don't know the severity of them, but at Jefferson and Farwell over a five-year period of time. So we're talking less than two per year at that intersection with an open intersection without a stop sign. And as I presented earlier, a stop sign would help. Also, caution-type signs could be put up within those blocks and not necessarily restrict the parking, which the people that live there truly need it. Thank you.
Unless there's any new information from persons, the chair will close item three, item four. Any new input? Indeed, we will close item four and bring our attention to, our last item this evening is a public presentation on the City of Eau Claire Invest Health Project. Ms. Gizi, I believe, is leading this presentation? Welcome. You could perhaps, I'll just leave it to you to introduce your team.
Thank you, Council President, and Council for giving us the opportunity to share with you some work that's been happening in the last year and we hope continues. I am here to give a brief overview. You also received some materials in your packet about our Invest Health Project. And this is a project with five team members, my bodyguards behind me. The five of us have been involved since last June in a very competitive process to be selected as a city. Mid-sized cities across the U.S. were encouraged to apply. We are one of 50 cities that are participating in a project to look at place and health and how we can creatively create healthier place. So behind me are, hopefully in order, Dale Peters, Mike Rindo, Bruce King, and Keith Jonathan, and they'll be sharing a little bit more. You did receive some basic information on all five of those members, and I'm really excited that they were willing to, last year, say yes to this project. Invest Health was created by Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the Reinvestment Fund, two big funders in the U.S. who said, "We know a lot about the fact that place impacts health outcomes. We need to look at creative solutions to change that." And we think mid-sized cities is a place to do that in. And so they selected us to be part of the project. It's been a, an exciting opportunity to learn and an exciting opportunity to focus on some things that are happening in the city. Thank you, Ms. Merle. In the course of the project, we were asked to decide on a place. And because of the work that has happened in the city of Eau Claire over the last couple of years, the decision was made to focus on the Randall Park neighborhood as a specific place where we see some disparate health outcomes. You see on the slide that some of that focus is because of the data that we have. So things like low-income population being really focused in that neighborhood as one of our central city neighborhoods. Fifty-eight percent of that neighborhood is considered in poverty, and many people are surprised by that. Over 20% of that neighborhood has been in poverty for more than 30 years. It's also our highest renter, cost-burden area. It's an area that has housing that is old, and because of its age, can be unhealthy, not always. It's also an area of our community where we know from data that we've looked at, health data, that there are more poor mental health days from the population in that community, and it's a food desert. So data said, let's look at this neighborhood. We also got great feedback from the neighborhood that said they want to be part of creating some change there. So we focused on Randall Park. We also focused there because there are many assets. Neighborhood revitalization plan that came from the city was one of those assets. But as you see on this slide, some of those place-based assets were also important as we started to look at what we could do to create some change in a neighborhood. You are very familiar with these assets, but things like the hospital being there, having the downtown across the river, the county government center, and the university, certainly the future event center that is being planned, were all part of that. The idea of this project is to not only look at health outcomes, but to use existing assets and research, resources to create some change. What the project has been about has been to create a pipeline. So this was a very creative drawing of our pipeline. Pipeline meaning not what money can come into this neighborhood to create change, but what are the projects, the resources, and the people that can be part of creating change? So on your handout, you see this in some level of detail, but our team spent a lot of time looking at, with a target of Randall Park as a starting point, what are the policy changes that could happen? What are the physical activity initiatives that could happen? How could we look at housing? How could we look at food? And how could we look at social connection to make a difference? Around the outside of that pipeline are stakeholders, very important to creating change, and looking at financing and creative financing to build improvements. The concept of a pipeline has been one that we've spent, our team has spent a lot of time talking about. We thought going into this, this was a pipeline about just creating some new money that could come into this community. And it certainly is that, but it's well beyond that. We are creating great connections to new funding sources to create some change, but it's also about really thinking creatively about next steps. On the next slide, you'll see that the end of that pipeline, from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation standpoint, and certainly as all of you know from my, my motivation is really to change some health outcomes. We particularly focused on a few health outcomes that we are looking at tracking over time. Injury related to housing, chronic disease changes, and mental health and social connectedness changes. These are all connected, as you've heard me and others talk about, our community health priorities to our community health priorities for the county as a whole. A large part of this project has been to be data-informed, and you see that in some of the materials that you received. We've had new tools and resources to give us new data, health data, and broad community data about this part of the, about this part of the community, but our community as a whole, Eau Claire as a whole. And we're getting pushed to come up with ways to measure that actual change could be an improvement. We can talk more about that if you're interested. This slide gives you a little sliver of some of the things that our team has talked about and some of the efforts that we are either building upon or trying to add value to by this relationship that the five of us are building, but also the, some of the learning that we're doing. So certainly, we're hoping to build up on the comprehensive plan health chapter and the neighborhood revitalization plan, two important plans that, obviously, council members around the table have been part of. TIF policy as it moves forward, looking at opportunities for potential health outcomes from that. The rental registration and housing code changes that were proposed to you and moved forward in this body, also part of our conversation, and you saw many of the players in this team and others that were part of providing feedback on that. Recently, the Randall Park had a Neighborhood Revitalization Corporation formed with input and lots of conversation with our team. We've been meeting with the healthcare providers in the area, not only Mayo, who sits in that neighborhood, but healthcare providers across the community have met with our team to talk about health data and about place-based change that can create health. And we're certainly working very closely, particularly with UW-Eau Claire, YMCA, and Mayo. Mike Rindo on our team provides our anchor institution to this project, which has a very significant, specific designation as part of the Invest Health Project. He's our anchor. There you go.
Good job, there.
Part of our conversation, and where we are hoping to move forward, is to really start rolling off some of the creative ideas that have bubbled up from learning from the other 50 sites across the U.S. and some of the experts that we have access to now. So these are the kinds of things we've been talking about. Some of them that are actually going to be happening and some that we're hoping to help shepherd forward. Having employer-sponsored housing in Eau Claire, a seminar is being planned around that with the Wisconsin Realtors Association. Having neighborhood block parties, something that you've heard previously. Looking at housing rehab, increasing homeowner rates, increasing access to healthy food in neighborhoods like this where there are food deserts. Having broad stakeholder engagement and learning. So we've talked to folks that finance things, and we've talked to folks that live in the neighborhood and kind of everybody in between as part of this project. And we hope to continue that exploration with developers, lenders, funders, foundations. We really see the chance to bring new money to the city of Eau Claire, but also new ideas. So it's not just about the funding. I'm going to step away and have team members share with you a little bit about what has excited them about being part of this project. I think it's important for you to hear directly from them. We, the five of us, represent a piece of the city of Eau Claire. We are bringing many other partners to the table, but it's been really a wonderful opportunity to have the four of these individuals with us on the journey. So I will, in order on our slide, ask Keith to come up. Thank you.
Good evening. I have to start by saying that when I was first approached by Liska about joining this endeavor, I wasn't sure what to expect. I was a little apprehensive, a little apprehensive as I wasn't quite sure what I could bring to this team. It was most definitely a challenge that I was determined to face. Once I got involved, I became more energized and invigorated about what we were doing. With that being said, my reasons for why being involved in Invest Health excites me are multifold. The first reason is that I've gotten to be part of a team, this team. This team of diverse leaders has taught me so much about how to approach situations head-on and to search for solutions while thinking outside the box. I've learned so much from these people individually and collectively, which has changed my way of thinking about the positive role that government can and should play. Secondly, I've had the opportunity to learn more about community engagement. Secondly, I've had the opportunity to learn more about community engagement, whether that has been meeting with boards or committees or one-on-one through the educational opportunities provided by Invest Health. The third reason is that I've had an opportunity to be part of something that is bigger than anything I have ever done before. Being the Director of the Housing Authority and the Housing Manager for the city of Eau Claire has brought very different challenges. But being involved with Invest Health has taken me into a new and exciting direction. It's amazing to be part of a team that can help change the trajectory of a community, capitalize on the numerous positives which already exist, and to find and utilize the available resources in new and innovative ways. In closing, I'd like to say that I am proud of the work that we're doing and ultimately what we hope to achieve. It's just another way in which we can continue to make Eau Claire, and more specifically, the Randall Park neighborhood, vital and prosperous for future generations.
Good evening. I will echo some of Keith's sentiments about working with this very diverse team. When I was asked to do this, I went to work trying to find where I could bring assets to this and information to this. And since I work in kind of the real estate business, I had two sources. One was the Wisconsin Realtors Association, the other was the National Association of Realtors, and they have both taken notice of what is going on here in Eau Claire. First, to update something Lisca just said about the employer-assisted housing, it's more than being planned, it's booked. Last week, I was able to write a grant from the National Association of Realtors to do an employer-assisted housing seminar here in Eau Claire. We are partnering with our association down in La Crosse. We are going to invite employers of mid- and large-size businesses to come to Eau Claire. We are going to bring in the Greater Minnesota Housing Fund. Warren Hanson is the Executive Director and CEO of that. They've been doing employer-assisted housing for better than two decades in Minnesota. They've done over $20 million of it. So they are very knowledgeable in this area and can ask the right questions of the right lenders and the right projects. They also do projects in Wisconsin and Michigan and Illinois. They partner with healthcare, they partner with insurance. So this is going to be a very good seminar. It'll be at my office at nine o'clock on October 13th, and yes, you are invited to attend. As I mentioned, Eau Claire gets noticed. It gets noticed more, just more than what you see going on downtown with the confluence and with all the development that's going on here in Eau Claire. Our national staff at NAR, and that's 1.3 million members, our senior staff there has approached me to come to Eau Claire and do a symposium on health and housing. It is incredibly important, not only here with what we're doing with Invest Health, but it's all over the country. Where you see housing that you really would look twice at here in Eau Claire and other parts of the country, think that's absolutely terrific based on what they have. So within health, within Invest Health teams all across the country, many of them doing the same things that we are doing, we're looking for ways to improve the housing stock, to make it safe, to make it healthy, while at the same time improving the health by getting rid of the food deserts, getting the right kinds of food, the right nutrition and the right information into the consumers' hands, so they know a little bit better what's going on. But when, again, you look at what kind of wages you have, what kind of jobs you have, how much of your income is going toward housing, be it a mortgage or be it rent? And then you have to put that together with what kind of food you can buy, what you can afford in your households. It all works together and all comes together. So what we are working on right now is a symposium to address some of those issues. And with the backing of the National Association of Realtors, you'll be looking for a symposium late this year, early next year, and Invest Health is going to be a part of it.
Thanks, Bruce. You know, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation's been involved with health for a long time, and many of you might not be aware, but they are the organization that principally changed the conversation at the national level about cigarettes. And they are now turning their focus to the built environment and how the built environment impacts health. And, you know, when we look at what that means, you know, for us as a city, you know, we design our parks, our roads, our sidewalks, our paths. We talk about how people are connected together within their neighborhoods. We talk about the easy access to food and the quality of the housing that we live in. All of these things are the built environment, and they're really important to the people that call Eau Claire home. When we were invited to this conversation, I've got to say it's been a really wonderful opportunity, not only professionally, but also personally. And quite frankly, we've been asked to think and talk outside of our comfort zones. We've been asked to stretch the conventional wisdom and to intentionally discuss the impact of the built environment and health. It's a really challenging conversation. And it's a conversation that reaches into some really challenging topics like poverty and race. Now, Eau Claire, as you know, enjoys a tradition of working collaboratively to move our community forward, and this team is building on that tradition. And it's been more than a pleasure to work with these fine folks that are behind you here and the partners that we've talked about in the community. But this work is not about how the city alone should shoulder the task of revitalizing a neighborhood. I want to be really clear here. It's a conversation with our lending community and our developers and our landlords and businesses and the medical community, our institutions of learning, and of course, the residents of the neighborhood, on how we will create a vibrant, thriving, socially-connected and healthy place to live. Randall Park, and Helene, if you're here or listening to it, I apologize because it is actually the historic Randall Park neighborhood, is a neighborhood that's in transition. And it's hoped that this focus and intentional discussion can assure that that transition is one towards improving health and the quality of all the residents that are in that neighborhood. And if it's successful, this is going to lead to projects and partnerships with other neighborhoods. So why am I excited to be part of this? Look at this team. There's an incredible amount of resources here that have been brought to the table. And those relationships, along with those that we're developing with others in the community, they promise to bring a really pivotal and impactful change to one of our oldest central city neighborhoods. How could I not be excited about being part of that?
So anchor, batting cleanup, whatever metaphor you want to use here, but why would the university become the anchor institution for an initiative such as this? And the answer is, in our university facilities master plan, we state as a guiding principle that we want to preserve and enhance the surrounding neighborhoods. I think we've also demonstrated through our actions that we are very interested in improving quality of life and quality of place in Eau Claire. I can tell you that I've been both intimidated and inspired in my participation, by my participation in this initiative. Last year, at the first national convening, we were at the opening reception, and they were talking about the expectations that the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the Reinvestment Fund has on the teams, saying to us, "You were selected through a very competitive process. You were selected because of the ideas that you presented when you applied for the grant, and we expect really big things from you. And tonight, we want you to make sure that you are meeting all of the people who potentially could be reinvesting in your community." At which point, we all leaned over to Lisca and said, "What have you gotten us into?" I mean, it was like, this is, this is the big leagues. And we've learned through the national experts they've brought in, the availability that we now have to access important data to make decisions, that these people are really serious. And they do expect big things from us. I think we're up to it. You've heard about the neighborhood revitalization, and that's an important component. But what's different about this initiative, in my opinion, is it takes a lot of different parts of the whole public health and how can you improve on the social determinants of health in order to have a more healthy community. So one of the things, as Lisca said, what are we excited about? I'm excited about that, but I'm also excited about the possibilities that the Sonntag Event Wellness and Event Recreation and Wellness Complex, say that five times fast, easy, brings because of its proximity to historic Randall Park. Our partners are the YMCA, Mayo Clinic. What if, you know, the medical community talks about upstream. Let's, let's create healthy lifestyles so that we're not treating downstream diseases. What if someone gets a prescription to improve their health? How do they go about doing that? One of the things that we've done with the Sonntag Center as we're doing our tours on this is, Mayo has participation kitchens at their Human Wellness Center in Rochester. I thought, well, wouldn't it be cool to be able to help people buy healthy food and teach them how to prepare it in healthy ways that will then reduce some of the things that we're talking about with obesity, with chronic illness and those kinds of things? So if you look at this in totality, and it's really based on neighborhood revitalization and the Poverty Summit that Clear Vision Eau Claire did and the city do with Neighborhood Revitalization Task Force and a lot of other efforts, this is really in line with that. But I think it's taking, it's taking those ideas and we're being able to attach some concrete, possible solution steps. So thank you for your time and thank you for your interest.
Maybe Ms. Merle will share her last slide.
Oh, yes.
It's okay. I think we've been pushed to be the change. I think everybody standing in front of you has already done that in their professional careers, but now we have a new partnership to do that. So we're excited to be looking at creative ways for the next step. And we're certainly available for questions, although you've had a very long evening.
If you don't mind, I'll just check to see if there are some questions. Are you all up for that? We might be too tired, I'm not sure. Questions, anyone? Of the team? More comments? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. My comment is, just to share with you, if I could get every last emotion, I would be like Ursine O'Hall back in the 90s with my arms just hooting and hollering in the air. I could not be more thrilled and grateful for the work that you all are doing. I know that you all realize the impact that you're having of thousands of people that live in the neighborhood and their future trajectory. So thank you very much. It makes a big difference. It's going to make a big difference, and I'm very, very grateful for the time that you're spending. I know that you have to do some extensive travel and you have some commitments away from your families, and I honor and respect that and thank you. And I know it's not just you up here that's making this happen, it's your team and your families that are also investing in the health in our community. So thank you very much.
Are there questions or comments? You have our gratitude. And anything that we can do to help you implement or move forward your project choices, we will help you to the best of our ability. And I guess more, since you're putting in more than your ability, we'll put in everything we got. Thank you all very much. So we come to the end of another important meeting. There being no further business, though, to come before this body, and a motion by Councilmember Clint Hammer, seconded by Councilmember Mitchell, we are adjourned without objection.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Eaton?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Kincaid?
Here.
Clint Hammer?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Tebow?
Here.
Von Haden?
Here.
Wells?
Here.
Forsman?
Here.
John?
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Tuesday, August 28th Legislative Session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its legislative session, the council deliberates and takes action on the agenda items before us. We have prepared for this responsibility by working with citizens and collaborating with the staff and reading the considerable amount of materials in our packets. And we arrived this afternoon ready to exercise our duty. We do welcome those of you who are joining us in chambers and are grateful, as always, to community television for streaming and broadcasting these proceedings for people who cannot attend in person. We do have important items on our agenda this afternoon, so we will get right to work. Our agenda starts with the consent agenda, items one through 17, I believe, oh, 19. Councilmembers have questions or wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing no such desire on a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, the consent agenda is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tebow?
Aye.
Von Haden?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Forsman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the consent agenda is passed. I have the pleasure this afternoon, or we have the collective pleasure this afternoon of recognizing a baseball championship in our city, and I would invite the American Legion team and Coach Mark Fawness to meet me at the podium. So today, we've prepared a certificate for you that recognizes Eau Claire Post 53 American Legion baseball team on winning the American Legion State Championship, thereby bringing honor and recognition to our entire community. We, we as a council, of course, recognize many events and honors in our city, and each one of them is important. It's sometimes, I suppose one could say, "Baseball. What is baseball?" But I would beg to differ, as we are a baseball family at my house, and we have our third generation of baseball player now is the head coach at UW Stout. So we honor the game and the pleasure it has brought our family, the team camaraderie, the intelligence it takes to read the game and play it well as a team. And it's a beautiful game, and we thank your team for bringing this honor to our city and would hope that you could say a few words, or your team.
I asked them last night who wants to speak. I didn't get a lot of volunteers. I'm Mark Fawness, 3527 Leslie Lane Eau Claire, which is the way I usually have to sign on to these things, right?
Right.
This is quite an honor for us. You may or might not know, this is the first time in 31 years we've won the state championship. And some of you may know I've been doing this a long time, and so the questions have been, "What took so long, Mark?" But we have a special group of young men here. They couldn't all be here, somebody, some have already headed off for, for college for the year and a couple other commitments. So, but we had a, just a great group of kids, young men. Besides the baseball piece, honestly, we preached to them hard that, you know, you're representing our post 53, you're representing our sponsors, and you're representing our city. And they did all of that very well. There were comments at the state tournament about the tournament in general by the folks that ran the tournament, our state administrators, that this was the most well-behaved group of players and teams and all that, fans that anyone could ever remember. So it was a great tournament that way, and the same type of comments when we were at the national regional in Ohio. So they were a fine group of guys.
My name's Kaz Paulskill, and I go to school at Memorial, and I played outfield.
Congratulations.
My name is Dylan Curry, I played shortstop, and I went to Elk Mound this year.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
My name's Jackson Koska, I go to Regis, and I play outfield.
Congratulations, Steve.
My name's Austin Sells, I go to Eau Claire Memorial, and I pitch.
Congratulations. Thank you all. We're in public sector.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you. Hey, we continue our work this afternoon with our business agenda, which begins with item 20, a resolution granting a temporary expansion of a reserved combination Class B license and fermented malt beverage to Redtail Enterprises, doing business as Roble Tacos and Tequila. Mr. Nick?
Thank you, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, Roble Tacos and Tequila is applying for a temporary expansion. They are a permanent restaurant on our, our south side. Agent Greta Hunt is here as well. If they have any questions, Ms. Hunt can certainly step up, but this is a temporary expansion for an afternoon event that they are planning. Certainly, uh, sounds like a fun one, La Tomatina, I think it is, yeah, see? Uh, so, maybe Ms. Hunt will get up and give you some of the fun background, but I understand derives from a Spanish tomato tossing event. Uh, so, I understand no tomato tossing, but tomato mini carnival events, or a variety of carnival events featuring, uh, the tomato. So, something to look forward to there. Uh, the, uh, the basics of it is it's on August 29th. The expansion is between 2:00 PM and 9:00 PM, to give them a little setup and takedown time. The event itself is expected to be between 4:00 and 8:00 PM, so not, not late into the evening. As I noted, it is also a fundraiser for Feed My People Food Bank. They will fence the area, have standard IDs, uh, security in place to check for, ensuring that there's no underage individuals in the expansion premise. They will also not allow the pass-through of, of alcohol, no, no take-ins or take-outs. The alcohol served in the expansion area will be limited to beer, canned beer, uh, for this event only. They'll also be serving fresh squeezed lemonade, and as I noted, having tomato-related carnival events, which I think is a phrase never previously uttered in council chambers. So, uh, it sounds like a fun event. The applicant was present, and we, we met with Ms. Hunt to review any related issues. The committee has no objections and happy to answer any questions if I can, or, um, Ms. Hunt perhaps can.
Questions for Mr. Nick or the applicant? Does the applicant wish to speak to her event?
Sure. There you go.
Thank you, hello, my name is Greta Hunt, and I am the General Manager of Roble Tacos and Tequila, and I just appreciate you taking the time to see us today, um, and consider us for the temporary liquor license expansion. What we want to do is celebrate the Tomato Festival of Spain, um, and it started way back in 1945 in Valencia, Spain, uh, when some city members had an argument, and instead of arguing and seeing it that way, they threw tomatoes at each other, um, in a way to take aggression out. Um, since then, it has become an annual tradition. The city council, I think, had tried, from what I gather, had tried to kind of, um, make it not happen, but instead they have now embraced it and just set forth some ground rules. Um, what we would like to do is create a little Tomato Festival at a restaurant to invite people to come and visit us, um, and try our All You Can Eat tacos for $9.99 on Tuesdays, um, and this will be the kickstart of it. We would also like to, um, let everyone in the community know that we would love to be a part of the community and raise money for Feed My People Food Bank. Um, so we will be donating 10% of our net sales that evening, and surely we'll be matching that donation to Feed My People Food Bank. We've asked Feed My People the Food Bank to, um, provide an information booth at our carnival as well, to kind of share with everyone in the community what they're all about. So, thank you very much. Any questions for me?
I see no questions, uh, thank you for bringing this new event to our city.
Thank you.
And on a motion by Councilmember T-Walt, seconded by Councilmember Wells, item 20 is moved, discussion. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T-Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T-Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T-Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T-Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Item 21 is a resolution authorizing the City Community Parks Association and Downtown Eau Claire Inc. to conduct the Clearwater Winter Parade and the Let It Glow on Friday, December 1st. Mr. Peppinger?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The special event application before you is a repeat event with changes. The Clearwater Winter Parade and Let It Glow 2017 is an annual event that is a free, family-friendly community event open to everyone. This year's event will, will occur on Friday, December 1st, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, and will take place in Phoenix Park with the Let It Glow ceremony, and then a fireworks display off the Grand Avenue pedestrian bridge to set off prior to the, the parade, which will be followed by the parade going down West Grand Avenue to First Avenue, concluding at Chippewa Street. The changes that bring this special event back to the city council are combining these two events that expects greater than 1,000 persons and closing down city streets and trails. This event is being put on by the City of Eau Claire, the Community Parks Association, and Downtown Eau Claire Inc. Mr. Kiran Hamel and Chad Durkop are here to answer any questions you might have, and as always, I'd be happy to answer questions, too.
Questions for Mr. Peppinger? I see none, thank you. Mr. Hamel, do you have any information to add or comments? Okay. On a motion then by Councilmember Clint Hammer, or, yeah, seconded by Councilmember Von Hayden, item 21 is moved, and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid?
Aye.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T-Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye. And that resolution passes. See you in December. Um, item 22 and, and 23 are related items, um, 22 being a resolution authorizing Downtown Eau Claire Inc. to conduct a grand evening on the bridge on Wednesday, and item 23, a resolution granting a temporary Class B fermented malt beverage license to, um, Downtown Inc. for the event. Mr. Nick?
Thank you, and appreciate the permission to address both at once. This is also a repeat event, uh, the Fourth Annual Grand Evening on the Bridge. It is in front of you on the business agenda only because you have a new liquor license applicant for the temporary picnic or temporary Class B license on item 23. But I'll quickly go over, uh, the basics of the event, which again, remain unchanged. So this is, uh, an evening dinner and reception on the Grand Avenue Footbridge. It is hosted by DEKI. Uh, it is also supported by, uh, the Eau Claire Noon Rotary Club, which in past years has also then been the liquor license applicant, but this year they're just supporting, and the liquor license applicant is DEKI itself. Uh, the event this year is, uh, going to occur on August 23rd, Wednesday, August 23rd, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. Um, the, uh, event requires city council approval since it involves serving alcohol, which is your second item, and also closing down that city pedestrian trail. You'll note that there's also some construction going on, on the, light it up, the bridge from Phoenix Park. That, uh, construction will be put on hold, so that bridge will be in service when the Grand Avenue Footbridge, uh, is being used for this event pending your approval. Uh, Mr. Kiran Hamel is the applicant on this license and for this special event, and is present if you have any questions of him. Otherwise, again, uh, Kiran appeared before license review. We have a standard set of expectations, uh, with the license, and I'd also note that alcohol is, uh, limited to one complimentary ticket and two additional, uh, by members, so, a, a limited amount of, of alcohol, in this case, beer and wine, uh, being served that evening. License review has no objection. Any questions? Myself or Mr. Hamel are available, thank you.
Questions for Mr. Nick? I see none. On a motion, and by Councilmember Mitchell, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, item 22 is moved, discussion. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T-Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T-Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. See you tomorrow. Item 24 on our business agenda is a resolution approving appointments and reappointments to various boards, committees, and commissions. The Appointments Committee lays before the body these recommendations, there are just two this time, to the Housing Advisory Board, Susan Wolfgram, for an appointment to expire in April of 2018, and to the Transit Commission, Mr. Nick Weber, a reappointment as the student representative for a one-year term, to expire in 2018. The university senate has the responsibility to, uh, actually find the student representative, which they did. And here he is, before us, for your approval. And on a motion by Councilmember Mitchell, seconded by Councilmember Emanuel, item 24 is moved. Discussion or questions? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
T-Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Now we move into a series of agreements with item 25, which is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Petanque Group. How'd I do, Anne Marie? Uh, in regards to the creation of Petanque Courts at Wilson Park. Mr. Peppinger?
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
Before the city council is a memorandum of understanding binding between the City of Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Patac Group. Patac is a form of bowls where the goal is to toss or roll a, to, or roll a hollow steel balls as close as possible to a small wooden ball called a cochonnet? She'll correct me if I'm wrong. Um, while standing inside a circle with both feet on the ground. Here's an example of, uh, some people playing the game. This memorandum of understanding includes a responsibility, well, let me go back. The MOU is for the Eau Claire Patac Group to fundraise for the material costs to construct four playing courts at Wilson Park, which is estimated to cost approximately $1,600. This is Wilson Park, and currently we have two gravel paths. This would be South Farwell Street, this would be, uh, South Barstow, and we have two paths that run up through here, and they're gravel paths. Currently, the group plays there, but the, the courts are not to regulation size. They need to be, right now, these are about, uh, three-foot paths that run through. The length is fine, because we need, uh, for a court, it needs to be approximately 12 feet by 50 feet. So we have the length there, what we need is a little bit more in the width, and quite[1602.74]
So we have the length there, what we need is a little bit more in the width, and quite honestly, to widen these out would probably be an improvement into that area. The city will not commence construction until funds are raised in cash. This memo of understanding includes the responsibility of the city, the Eau Claire Patac Group, capital campaign in terms of the agreement. The Department of Community Services believes that this partnership will be beneficial to the parties and to the community by expanding access for community physical activity and through the capital improvement of a new activity within the park. The Waterways and Parks Commission recommended approval of this project at their June 28th meeting. Ms. Anne Marie Bitner is here to answer any questions or further explain the game if you would have any questions. And as always, I'd be happy to answer any questions also.
Thank you, Mr. Peppinger. Do you have questions for Mr. Peppinger or Madame Bitner?
Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. You're welcome. What do you want me to say?
Just a bit about the game perhaps, Anne Marie.
Thank you. Petang is a wonderful game. I don't have to tell you that, but you will see pretty soon. And if everything is okay, when we will have a rubber cutting ceremony or vice versa, you will all be invited, and for sure you will also to play petang that day. Thank you ever so much, and I hope that you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions of Mr. Peppinger? There being none, then, on a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Tewalt, item 25 is moved, and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item 26 is a resolution approving the First Amendment to the 2017 Urban Mass Transit Operating Assistance Grant with the State Department of Transportation. Mr. Wagner?
Thank you. Good afternoon. The amendment before you is a result of the state had released their funding apportionment before the federal government had released theirs, because they have, apparently the state has a more strict timeline, but that, the result of that, when the federal government released their apportionments through the FTA, it ended up, Wisconsin received a larger share than what we were expecting, and so that changed our percentage from the federal government, and there had to be a reduction in the state apportionment. So, we received the first payment from the state already, and so it just affects the second payment that we will receive in September, and, or at the end of August, and the amount that's held back at the end, after an audit is performed.
Questions for Mr. Wagner? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
And a motion then by Councilmember Weld, seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, item 26 is moved. Discussion. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
And that resolution passes.
Next two items are related also. The first, item 29, being a resolution authorizing the vacation of a part of Old Town Hall Road from Lorch Avenue to the southerly I-94 right-of-way. We did have a public hearing on this item last evening. Any questions remaining? On a motion then by Councilmember Worthman, seconded by Councilmember Emanuel, item 29 is moved, and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that resolution passes.
We have three ordinances for action tonight. We start with the first, which is item 32, an ordinance rezoning properties on the west side of Mary Place, south of Renee Drive, from TR-1A to R-2. Do councilmembers have questions on this zoning request, zoning change request? On a motion then by Councilmember Von Hayden, seconded by Councilmember Mitchell, item 32 is moved, and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Aye.
T. Walz.
Aye.
Von Haden.
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Haden.
Aye. And that resolution passes. We have three ordinances for action tonight. We start with the first, which is item thirty-two, an ordinance rezoning properties on the west side of Mary Place, south of Renee Drive, from TR-1A to R-2. Do council members have questions on this zoning request, zoning change request? On a motion then by council member Von Haden, seconded by council member Mitchell, item thirty-two is moved and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kinkade.
Aye.
Klinkammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
T. Walz.
Aye.
Von Haden.
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Haden.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. Item thirty-three is an ordinance amending Title X of the Code of Ordinances entitled Vehicles and Traffic and Tables Section related to parking restrictions, enforcement, and meter changes. We did have a long presentation last evening, but do questions remain about the proposed changes? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Solberg. Hi.
Hi.
I, so we heard a lot of concern about students last night, and I, I was just wondering if there was any effort to reach out to students about, I guess, first to notify them of the potential changes, and then, second, to get any input from that population?
Our, our input process for these particular changes went through the Third Ward Neighborhood Association. So, we attended those meetings, and then, prior to the hearing that was held last night, we had sent a letter out to all of the property owners along South Farwell Street that would be affected by this change. So, we didn't go and knock on the doors. We relied on the property owners to distribute the information out to their tenants for that, as we, as we frequently do for when we have hearings for street projects. We didn't attend the university or have any special hearings, but when we work with a neighborhood that has a neighborhood association, we try to garner input from the neighborhood through their meetings that are scheduled, instead of holding a, you know, additional open house outside of those times.
And councilmember Worthman?
If I could just follow up. Did, did you receive a lot of student input at all through that process, or not necessarily?
I would say the majority of the attendees at the neighborhood association meetings are non-students, I would say. There, there was a few that were there, but I would certainly categorize it as the minority demographic at those meetings.
Could I ask a follow-up question? Mr. Solberg, one of the big changes, and we heard a lot of input last night, is the change to the South Farwell Street parking. And I just wanted to double-check with you about what you had said last night, that your sense is really, you know, you presented the number of accidents that had happened along that road. Most of those were at the intersection, Washington and Farwell, but you're, you had sort of said that this was a move that was in line with how other streets have been signed in terms of parking, and that it would actually, in your opinion, make things a lot safer. Is, am I hearing you right on that, that this change is going to bring down, we won't see, hopefully, see fifty-one crashes in the next five years?
I, I would anticipate that it will make traffic safer in that area, on that stretch of road. We did pull numbers from, that's a collector route, as opposed to a local route. And the other collector route that goes into the Third Ward, that does have parking restricted on one side, has a crash rate that's less than half of what the crash rate is on Farwell Street for the section. And then, another comparison is Margaret Street in the East Side Hill. That also has a much lower crash rate than we have on Farwell Street. So, we would anticipate that if you compare just the Third Ward collectors, that the crash rate should come down, and it does have an elevated crash rate over comparison streets that function in a similar neighborhood like that.
And, but those numbers do include that intersection, which is...
That includes the entire stretch, yeah, whether it's right exactly at the intersection, or if it's mid-block. Oftentimes, when accidents are reported, they might not be in the middle of the intersection, but they report them to the closest intersection for reference, so...
Is the idea of reducing speed by a four-way stop, which was something we heard last night, was Jefferson and Farwell four-way stop, is that a possibility?
Well, when we have requests, and we, we receive numerous requests for four-way stops to control speed at locations when you start, and if you're in a local, a street situation, in a local neighborhood, where you're dealing with people doing the last, you know, quarter mile to their house, where you don't have the volume of traffic, you can generally put in a four-way stop to control those movements. When you're dealing with collector and arterial routes, where you're having not only parking, especially in a collector where you have parking, but you have the need for traffic to move through it from point A to point B, there are a set of national standards that you look at for crash rate, turning movements, who's going what direction, which side has more traffic. You do not install stop signs and traffic signals or other kind of control devices without following accepted standards, because that's what the driving public expects when you start to have those volumes and a road goes through a different collector. So, if, if this was two collector or two local streets, I would, I wouldn't be, as opposed to putting a stop sign in just to control speed, as when it does jump into an arterial collector. And we do have a study going right now at Jefferson Street, and that could change the dynamic of that intersection significantly next year, so...
Okay.
That's kind of the difference of why we don't endorse just applying stop signs when you start having a higher volume of traffic.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Solberg, can you tell me the timeline of when you started doing outreach with the neighborhood? And what I'm thinking about is kind of the natural occurrence that students are often gone during the summers or tend to be out of town, so I'm wondering if there's an overlap, and then I might have a follow-up question.
The, the first neighborhood association meeting that we attended was shortly after construction wrapped up on the Park and Summit project last year. We had an outreach with the neighborhood for that set of projects. When that was finished, Mr. Thompson and myself from the city went and attended a meeting in October, I believe, because we had originally looked at expanding the district of, from four to eight feet for marking last fall, before the snow came, but then it wasn't possible, and there were some discussions with the neighborhood association, and we held off until the spring, and then the neighborhood association wanted to talk to some of the residents. And now, we're in the summer, and we wanted to try and get at least that portion of the ordinances passed before school started, and the discussions on Farwell Street were had, along with those, the other issues with the Third Ward. So, it's been ten months or so, I would say.
May I ask a follow-up? Thank you. In the event that this goes through without any changes, what is the process then to work specifically with the student body? I, if I read between the lines, in my interpretation, it seems a little like there's a flag being thrown out saying, "Could you please work with us? We didn't feel like we were part of the process, and we want to help make this a good win-win for everybody, including the residents that are here for nine-ish months out of the year." What would be the process then to work with the student body to help with the educational campaign side of things with residents?
What I would anticipate would probably be a similar process to what went through with the alternate side parking revisions. We would have some, we would have a grace period for enforcement, put notices on cars, you know, of the recently enacted ordinance change, work with the university to go through their social media to their students to make them aware of the change, and then, ultimately, at some point, where there's a transition period, then it would be, I guess, we'd work with the police department on when that, that firm enforcement period would start for it. So, it would be an educational campaign. And we would update our, probably our, our website also with the parking ordinances, I guess, in conjunction with getting the word out through UWO Claire's social media.
Councilmember T. Walz.
Thank you, Council President. Question, I have, a couple of the residents expressed concern about multiple signs in their yard for no parking, no parking eight hundred feet, et cetera, et cetera. Is there a way, and this is a request, to combine that into one sign for those lots? I mean, one, one owner with four signs, another one with two, plus I think of the looks of the neighborhood, if those could be condensed, can you speak to that, please?
We could look to see for, the, the no parking signs that would accompany this ordinance on, on Farwell Street would be different than the no parking signs, or the number of those signs or the frequency, as opposed to the expanding the four feet to eight feet in the district. Are you referring to those signs?
Those, yeah.
If there's areas where we can combine those, or if there's a sign that would be no parking here to corner, and then, five feet away, there's the marker for the driveway where you couldn't park, physically park there, then we could look at reducing the signs in those locations. The way the, the ordinance enforcement is required, where there's a white line, there should be a, a sign accompanying that for, for parking. So, we, we can't skip the signs if we have that, that eight-foot mark painted down there. But there may be opportunities, but I'm not sure of the number that that would be. It would be rather, rather small, I think.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, sorry, I have one.
Yes, councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. Do you have any, any thoughts about the request to remove the parking restriction on Drummond and Frederick Street, from, from what we heard last night?
Do I have a, a comment for that?
I guess, given, given our input that we, that we heard last night, do you have a recommendation?
I, I know I, I have had a number of phone calls today from, from residents that live in that area, and in the areas hatched, in that, in that, in the display. We, when we made, when we surveyed the, the neighborhood and, and looked at on-street usage, there were, we witnessed cars that were parked over there. They weren't parked as densely as in the yellow area, and we put the map together, worked with the neighborhood association for the boundaries. There wasn't much feedback regarding this area here when we were talking with the neighborhood association. They had originally talked about moving it out. If we had received feedback at the time for, from the residents as strongly as we heard last night and today with phone calls and emails, it probably would be something that, you know, we would not have included in this proposal. So, if it's, if it's chosen to be removed from the boundaries of this part of the proposal, I really don't see any harm in that, if the residents in that area are not for this. The ordinance was originally, in the yellow area, was originally brought forward because of concerns with cars parking too close to driveways, property owners not being able to get out. There are, it does raise the risk of a property damage crash when you're backing out if, if the cars are too close for that, and that was a big, part, or part of the discussion with the yellow. And when it moved out, if those residents aren't concerned with that, we probably would not have included it at this time, so I don't see any, any harm if it's not included, if that's what the body should choose this afternoon.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Mr. Solberg, did you prepare an amendment for me today to bring tonight to exclude that hatched area?
We did, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We are a city that works. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. The last question I have is regarding an email that we got from the student vice president, student body vice president, and he had some concerns about, in particular, South Farwell, and creating, as he calls it, a significant burden on the tenants of those predominantly student rentals. Do you foresee any scenario where this change would, I guess, maybe I'll word it a different way. Do you know if all of the properties have adequate off-site parking for renters?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure if all of the, the multifamily houses that, that are rental properties on that street do have adequate parking for the number of tenants. I think it would probably depend upon how many tenants are in the house, if it switches from three to four. Some of the feedback last night was that it didn't appear that all of the houses did have adequate onsite parking available, and there was a demand for parking on Farwell Street. But I, I can't say if there is a demand in accordance with our zoning requirements and our requirements for multifamily housing for ninety parking spaces, and there's forty-five provided in those, in those, those, those properties. We didn't look at it for trying to, we didn't look at it as being punitive or accommodating for properties that do or do not provide all of their on-street or off-site parking. We looked at it as a safety improvement along that corridor. So, I guess that's what I would offer on there.
May I ask a follow-up to that? So, in, in the event that this would go through, what happens then in that scenario where there's a discrepancy of thirty, forty-five vehicles that may, may or may not have a, a place to park near their residence?
Well, I think there, there would be opportunities on adjacent streets throughout the neighborhood. I'm not sure that there would be a difficulty. I'm not sure if they're short by twenty cars or thirty cars, if they would be able to find adequate parking adjacent to that. But that, that would be the responsibility, I guess, of the landowner or landlord. When somebody rents a property, if they do not provide enough parking on their site, they would either have to include it in lease, or with the tenant holders to arrange for parking wherever they would feel appropriate, if they're not able to locate it on-street in the area.
Any further questions? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Let's see, we're up, let's see, on a motion then by councilmember Strobel, seconded by councilmember John, item thirty-three is moved, and discussion or amendments are in order. Councilmember Mitchell?
Madam President, if it's okay with you now, I have an amendment. There are two pages here, there's a map associated with it, and if, Mr. Solberg, could you put the old map up with the hatching on it?
Since the ordinances themselves are a little bit difficult to read, I trust that this says what Mr. Solberg promised it said, which is that it eliminates the hatched area that's on the map on the screen, and what you have is what the map would look like if this amendment passed. And I, I offer this based on the comments from last night. The truth is that the neighborhood has been working on this for almost a year, and there have been multiple discussions about it, and they, they did a survey, they, they tried to go door-to-door, but obviously, the concerns of the people in this particular area did not get communicated back for one reason or another. And Mr. Solberg assures me that this is not a safety matter in this area, so I offer, I offer this amendment.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Mitchell's offered a motion to amend, seconded by councilmember Klinkammer. Further discussion on your motion, seconded?
Thank you. I, having lived down there on Coolidge Court, although it was a few years ago, and I'm sure its circumstances have changed, but I don't recall, having walked that neighborhood, that I saw the parking issue go east of Rust. So, I don't think that going down Drummond or including Frederick is necessary. But one thing I observed in driving down the Third Ward is the plethora of no parking signs. It's significant, and I, I, if we're cutting this short and traffic does move into that, those areas of Frederick and Drummond, can always expand this at some future time, but I don't think it's necessary right now.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? We'll try this then. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? A motion to amend is added to the resolution, which stands before you now as amended. Further discussion on the resolution? Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. I'd like to speak to the Farwell Avenue, not a thing. I drive down Farwell Avenue every day, sometimes more than once. It's the direct route to City Hall, to the grocery store, to just about every place. And when there are cars parked on both sides of the street, which during the school year there are most of the time, it is very difficult for two cars to pass this way. If there's a school bus, or a truck, or any vehicle larger than a Volkswagen Bug, you can't, you have to pull over and let the other car through. In the winter, when it, when the snow builds up, it's impossible. It's a one-way street during that time. And there are also some problems with being able to see as you turn, corners there, and this, this request was also brought by a couple of the neighbors who, who also see the problems. So, while I appreciate that the parking difficulties that might result, it's possible that some of the landlords might want to look at providing some more off-street parking, if they possibly can, and maybe they haven't looked at that, because they haven't had to. But I would really encourage us to, to restrict parking on that section, those, those three blocks of Farwell, to one side of the street.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, councilmember Mitchell, for adding to the conversation. Well, you are, you're such a strong study of the issues, and you live right in the neighborhood, and I know you attend more meetings than you ever signed up for, so I know that you study the issue backwards and forwards. One of the, one of the things that I wrestle with and I, I struggle with is that many of our landlords don't even live in town, and aren't keen on the changes that are happening, and are not responsive in a timely manner to provide what renters need. And so, I think for a transitional period, there, there is opportunity for a lot of miscommunication to take place, or maybe expectations to not be met by multiple parties, and I think that's hard. I think it's really hard for people who are trying to live here and go to school. So, that's the part that gives me the greatest heartburn. At the same time, I know that our, our engineer department is the most thoughtful, and also thinks about things frontwards, backwards, upside down, and I know has the best interest of our citizens. So, I will support this tonight, understanding it's complicated and it's not easy. And I would ask that our city please work even a little bit more with our, our student body here in the community to help bridge some of that communication gap, and knowing that June one and September one will look a little different next year, because more expectations will be known. But just to really work with grace that has been offered and many times before.
Thank you. Further, councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. I kind of struggle with this decision as well. We heard comments in, on both sides in terms of how this would change South Farwell, and, and, you know, I think one of the things that is a strong concern of mine, and, and is one of the reasons I always support slower speed limits, is the fact that, you know, it's dangerous on these roads, and we have people getting into accidents, and to me, that rises to the, to the highest level of importance as we try and make this decision. I also think, on top of it, is that as we're looking at Jefferson and how we might change that street in the future, and I know that's an ongoing study, I do think there's going to be opportunities for parking to likely happen along that street. I often notice that as you head up toward Plank Street, it's a little bit more vacant in terms of the, the amount of parking, and so, it will potentially, in the short run, be difficult for students to walk those few extra blocks if they, if their landlord doesn't provide parking, but I think those are the kind of trade-offs that we should be aware of and be sensitive to. So, I will, I will be supporting this ordinance and the parking changes on South Farwell.
Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I, too, am concerned about the safety issues with that road. I have lived in the Third Ward, I don't now, but I have, and it does get very tight, exactly what councilmember Mitchell had said. I, and so, I will also be supporting this. I do have concerns with the level of engagement with students. You know, I, I, I think that engaging with the neighborhood is extremely important, especially in something like this. Though, having been a student, living in that neighborhood not so long ago, I, I don't know that engaging with the neighborhood association means engaging with students. And so, I would like to see more of that in the future, as we're working on projects like this. So, just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell?
And, and I would also add that I, I think that the students need to take a proactive approach to engaging the neighborhood association, and one way to do that is they have a very active Facebook page. You can like it and see what the agenda items are for the meetings, and every time you see parking, you might want to send somebody over, and you're smiling at me back there, but it's true that I think you need to, the students need to insert themselves into the activities of, of the neighborhood association.
And any further discussion? Back to the resolution then, as amended, and there being no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Klinkammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Walz?
Aye.
Von Haden?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Haden?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kinkade?
Aye. And that ordinance is adopted. Our last ordinance for action tonight is an ordinance amending Tables, Title III of the City Code entitled Revenue and Finance by creating a Chapter 3.40 entitled The Living Wage. We had a public hearing last night and a long presentation. Do council members have questions of Mr. Winsens? There being none, on a motion by councilmember Mitchell, seconded by councilmember John, item thirty-four is moved, and discussion is in order. Before we get to that discussion, the, the chair just has a brief statement to make, and it is that the council realizes that it may be about to exert a political will when, on the operation of the city's workforce, and we do so with respect, if it comes to fruition, respect to the administration of the operations of our city. And we are assured, from a long history together, that we will continue a collegial relationship with city staff, who are indeed our partners in the maintenance of the public good. And a brief statement also about how we came to this point. We are a high-functioning council. We demand a lot of each other, and we're, we step up to the plate, talk about hard stuff, and get through it somehow. We've set some processes in place that help us work together, and some of them work better than others, and some of them, we're still learning how to make them work better. So, in November of two thousand sixteen, as we've heard before, councilmembers Worthman and Emanuel brought an idea to a decision-making thing we have called a pre-legislative session. It's only the second time we've used that mechanism, and... It's only the second time we've used that mechanism, and its purpose is to determine where, whether there's sufficient interest by this body to move forward with a significant issue. The first time we used it was on our own, an idea to raise council wages. That's the first time we had a pre-legislative session. So we had one of those, and it was determined through discussion that there was a general sentiment that the council did want sta, did want to engage staff to work on a living wage ordinance. Was not a unanimous sentiment. In fact, four people were not interested in moving forward and in that pre-legislative session. But they realized that they were in the minority, and the will of the council as a majority prevailed. And councils, our staff set to work and worked with council members. We had two more work sessions, but a concrete proposal did not come forward at those work sessions. Until the last one, when a concrete proposal was laid before the council. And generally, a will sentiment, I don't, I don't know how you define consensus, and I don't know, it's kind of a mushy sentiment, but staff understood that there was a general feeling from the council that that proposal that was laid on the floor and discussed in the work session was ready for drafting in ordinance language. And that's what's before you tonight. What came out of that work session and staff's understanding is what's before you tonight in the simple resolution that we see in our agenda packet. Not everyone agreed with that sentiment. And there may be amendments to that resolution tonight by councilmembers who don't agree. There may not, there may. We, we have yet, we'll find that out in just a minute. But I know for sure that we will proceed in our custom with dignity and a graceful respect for one another's point of view, because that's our habit and the standard that we have held ourselves to for many, many years now. So with that pre, little history, I guess, and calming us all down, now discussion is in order on the ordinance that has been presented to you, which is on page 53. No, 100, anyway, you know it. Discussion is in order. Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for your introductory remarks this evening. And I want to just thank Mr. Winsens, our city manager, Dale Peters, and city staff, city attorney's office as well, for all the work on this issue. And it, it has been a long road. And, you know, I know that's something that I think, I think we're all learning from this last eight, eight months on this issue. Originally, as mentioned, Councilmember Emanuel and I had asked and requested that the city council consider a similar resolution to the one that was, sorry, a similar ordinance to the one that was passed by the county a few months, a few months prior, and one that has already been passed in other cities around our state. The real reason why this is in front of us is the fact that our community is strong. And we have, over the last number of years, raised wages for hundreds upon hundreds, I think over 500 city employees that we have. And we've done wage studies as well in recent years that look at some of our unrepresented groups, and we've done reclassifications. There was one group, one segment of folks in our city who did not see a raise in recent years. And in fact, back until the mid-2000s, have likely seen much shift at all in their wages. And that probably came around the time of minimum wage increase for our state. And that's the reason why this has come forward. There are people who are sitting on the side of the swimming pool in Fairfax, saving and helping save lives, who are starting out at $8, potentially even lower. We have people driving vans for the most vulnerable in our community, impaired transit. Again, starting out at some of those wages, sitting in a van all day, delivering services to some of the most critical folks that we have in our community who need help making $8 a day. We have people coaching soccer and other activities for Parks and Recreation who also have not seen a raise in a long time. And I think what we're talking about here today is the fact that those folks aren't any less than anyone else in our community. Their service, their contribution isn't any less. They are also putting their hard work, their time, their sacrifice into our community, and for that deserve to be compensated. And that's the discussion that we're having here tonight. One of the biggest pushbacks that I think we've heard in, both in this chamber but also in the county, is the fact that we don't have the finances to do this. And a lot of times I've been asked, and I, and I'm very frustrated by this, but I've been asked, well, where do you find that money? But what I don't hear, and what often is left out of the conversation, is every time we raise the, the pay of our firefighters, our police, those in, our police officers, every time we decide to take on a new project, we aren't asked that question about where is it in the budget. That is something that the city manager's office and the finance director's office, they help us come to some agreement on. It's not on councilmembers to figure that out, but we do figure it out. And we make ends meet in terms of meeting our obligations to our employees. I like to think of it like this. We have a wallet full of $100 and we're searching around for 16 cents, even lower, potentially, potentially 3 cents. And that's really what we're looking at here today. So that's the impetus about, behind why this is coming forward. And it's about making sure that people in our community are paid a decent wage. The other thing I would like to mention is that this isn't just about city employees. It isn't about our contracts, and it isn't really about TIF districts either. These kinds of ordinances, and according to PhD economist Tom Kemp, are actually the way that you help upward leverage wages across your entire community. When hundreds of employees are impacted in the county and a few hundred more potentially are impacted here in our city by a living wage ordinance, that actually helps people all across, whether you're working at Subway, or working at Jimmy John's, or you're helping clean the JAM building, everyone's wages start to see upward pressure. Because they say, look, my friend is making a little more, you know, I might try and go for one of those jobs, or they actually ask their employer to consider a higher wage. That's the kind of precedent that we're setting if we have leadership in our city on this kind of issue. This ordinance that sits on the table, while I respect the process that brought forward, for me, it doesn't go nearly far enough in terms of impacting our, some of, some of the folks that are not working three months and not working 20 hours a week, potentially a couple hundred more employees that I think, and I think Councilmember Emanuel, our original intent had been to cover. It also doesn't cover our contracts, specifically some of our, our services like impaired transit, and doesn't cover TIF districts. To me, this ordinance, I can't support as it sits on the table. And while I respect the process that Councilmember Kincaid has helped lead us through, I feel like this final ordinance, as it stands, is something that doesn't do justice to what a living wage ordinance ought to be and what the sort of impact a living wage ordinance can have on our community.
Further discussion? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilmember Worthman, for your comments. And I echo everything that you shared, including sincere thank you for the very hard work that I know staff undertook, even though it wasn't a staff, desire of staff as I understand it, staff has worked with us, and I, I do appreciate that very much. I have three things I want to start off in, in sharing why I think this is important. The first thing is that when we're looking at employees who work here in our community, and particularly the city of Eau Claire have a contract, a lot of times this is, in, in particular if it's a part-time employee, this might be a stepping stone to another place in the workforce. And I think that, to the best of our ability, anytime we can help somebody increase their long-term earning power is going to help them for economic success later on in their lives. In particular, we know women's earning power and people of color's earning power, and heaven help you if you're a female person of color and your earning power is a lot less than most people in society. And so it's really important to me to help elevate that earning power potential for the rest of one's life. The second is a little bit about maybe an argument or a perspective that I've heard of, well, you know, if you, you realize if you, if this passes, you're not going to be able to provide services as you did before. And in my heart of hearts, I think most citizens in Eau Claire are okay foregoing a few things, knowing that people like myself, or people who enjoy city services, are not doing it on the backs of other people who can't pay their bills, who don't have health insurance. And at the end of the day, for every vote we take, it's like we're signing our name, saying, yep, this is a good idea, or no, I don't agree with this. And I do agree that it's okay to make hard financial decisions, knowing that we're restoring people's financial worth and what they give to our city. The third item that is really important to me, that we've had a little bit of a public discussion on, is regards to health insurance. Many of our part-time employees do not participate in our health insurance plan. And for some people, having even $12, or 13, or even $15 an hour, and do not have the ability to participate in a health insurance plan can be financially devastating, especially when you look at some of the Affordable Care Act prices are, could be in the range of $2,000, and someone might not even make $2,000. And so it becomes very problematic and very expensive for people. And so that, that is an element that I think should be considered in part of this whole equation. I do have more thoughts that I would like to share, however, I'll, I can stop there and pass a baton for further conversation at this point.
Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. First, I'd like to, I, I would like to echo my fellow councilmembers Worthman and Emanuel. But first, I also would like to thank staff. This has been a very long process, and I can tell how much work has been put into it, and I really respect that. I also wanted to thank the folks who came out last night and spoke to us. I think that every opportunity that we have to hear from the public is always, at least for me, strengthens how I'm feeling about an issue as important as this. So thank you for using your voices. I first started thinking about wages when I was working at Subway in high school. I was making $6.25, and I was not nearly able to save up for the tens of thousands of dollars that I had to pay for college. But I was also working with a pregnant mother who had a child while I was working with her. And as I was working as a high school student and not able to, to save up for college, though I wasn't, you know, living off of the money that I, that I was saving up for, I, I began to think about how, and how in the world was she going to be able to, to sustain her, her own life and then her baby's life when it, when it was born? And I started thinking about that, and though I didn't have the words then, I thought about how, how wrong it was to allow people to work full-time and still live in poverty. She was on government welfare, and, and she wasn't doing well. And, and I just, I, I thought that that was wrong for a really long time. As I got older, I became more involved in the, the national movement for a living wage and actually became involved in a, a local movement to, I was a part, a part of the original core group to start the process at the county level. And so I've, I've really had a living wage on my thoughts for a long time. I campaigned on this issue, and it was one of the first questions that I asked when I was elected. And so I was really excited to see this, this ordinance come before us. However, I also don't think that it goes far enough. Being somebody who's very passionate about, about the, the people, the individuals and their, their livelihoods, I am, I'm also very passionate about the national movement for a living wage for all people, so that none of our American neighbors have to work full-time and still be living in poverty and struggling. And I do think that this ordinance undermines that national movement. I think that it, it really does a disservice to our, our community, but I, I do think that in this ordinance, we did have an opportunity to move, move the scale for our own community and in the private sector, but move the scale nationally so that all people can, can thrive. And I don't think that this ordinance will do that. So I, I am disappointed, and I never thought I would say this, but I'm disappointed that I, to, to say that I won't be supporting the ordinance.
And further discussion? Any further discussion? Councilmember Emanuel?
If it really is okay with my colleagues, I'll, I'll share again.
Looks like it.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to take this opportunity to also share in the public some concerns I have about the process. And I first want to say that I'm going to try to follow some very good advice that someone gave me. When you're frustrated, try to make the best assumption you can about some, about something you might be frustrated with. And so I want to say that I, I view all of the people who have been working here as people who care about the big picture of Eau Claire and the little picture of Eau Claire, and I know are very dedicated and passionate people here in our community. I think with good intentions, there have been some unfortunate missteps with some of the process that we used. And I'll take responsibility for not seeing something sooner, and, and that's on me. I have to take responsibility. For example, not really honing in on the distinction, and I think it's an important one, between a pre-legislative work session and, or pre-legislative discussion and a work session, that by our city council handbook, those have different purposes. And so there's kind of this give and take with sometimes staff-leading discussion and sometimes council and the body leading the discussion. And I think some of that process got a little mixed up. I also, during the, one, the first work session, brought up the interest of looking at health insurance and seeing if we could incorporate this into whatever proposal might come forth. And again, there was some miscommunication there. I was under the understanding that that would come forth at a future work session, and it didn't. And so that was something that I worked on independently with our city staff. And I am convinced and certain, they also tried to look frontwards and backwards and sideways and upside down on how do we work with this. There are more barriers with Affordable Care Act than I knew. That really prohibited municipality like ours to take maybe the action I wish we could give, or wish we could take. The other, the other thing is, from a process standpoint, I had asked to have some amendments or proposals as part of our consideration this evening, and I asked for them to be published last week. And I was told because we use this process, that, that wouldn't be possible, that we could hand them out like we often do on a Tuesday. And I knew that because we didn't talk about this as a body, I felt like, well, maybe I can help increase the conversation to citizens who are interested, to the media who are interested, and to colleagues to make a consideration. If I could get that in the packet before it was published, I think that would help people make a decision one way or the other, because I'd only talked to one councilmember about my proposal and feel like I need to honor that due to our- about my proposal, and feel like I need to honor that due to our sunshine laws. So, at this point, I think it would be really advantageous to work with our city staff to say, okay, there's some hiccups here, and how can we improve the process? Because certainly, we'll have other issues that come before us that are difficult to weigh through and to reconcile. So, those are my comments. If there's nothing further that anybody else wants to comment on, I will make a motion to table this, postpone this indefinitely.
A motion has been offered to postpone indefinitely?
I'll second.
I would like to still be in the discussion.
There is discussion, but it has to be on the motion to postpone, now that it's been made and seconded. A motion has been made and seconded to postpone indefinitely, which in essence kills the item.
Would the motioner be open to modifying the motion to table?
A table is the motion. A postpone indefinitely and table are the same thing in our practice.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Nick, would you care to render an opinion?
The motion to postpone indefinitely removes the item from council for its entire session. Since we're in session continuously, it's viewed as a motion to kill. Table is slightly different. It has at times been used interchangeably, but it is different. It's used within a meeting to move an agenda item up or down. The motion to postpone indefinitely, I think, is -- anyway, those are the distinctions. So since this is the last item, I think the motion to postpone indefinitely is appropriate. The only other issue you have is you have another council member seeking to speak typically for accommodation of fellow members. You know, that has been allowed. If now you're trying to terminate debate as you have another member interested in speaking, I would recommend that chair interpret it to be a two-thirds vote to now shut down debate. Usually, the way it's handled is, if someone else wants to talk, maybe just withdraw the motion for a moment and let a fellow member speak, and then reintroduce it after all debate is concluded. But that's the mover and seconder's option.
Given that input?
I'm happy to remove it out of courtesy for my colleague who would like to speak. I think that's important.
And Councilmember Beaton? Councilmember Tewalt?
Thank you, Council President. I was one of those not in large support. So with respect to Councilmember Emanuel, Councilmember Beaton, and Councilmember Worthman, my words that will disagree with some of your principles are in general, but not specific. I respect you all highly for the work you do. I have a different opinion on this issue, and I wanted to share that. In my opinion, this ordinance doesn't answer the problem that it should. It doesn't serve all residents of Eau Claire. It would be applied only to those who work for the city. We are here to govern those things that affect all citizens, and this is a subset. So that's one thing. I believe, though, the rule of economics still holds true, that the market sets the value. And in markets throughout the state, we see rents in homes fluctuate in value. They go up, they go down, to that area that supports it. So I don't agree with the supposition that such a policy would direct the market, though I understand that viewpoint. In the 21st century, we find very few opportunities for people to simply grow with a job, as we did at the beginning of the 20th, where we saw people worked all their way up from a groundskeeper to a CEO. What we do find is that without postsenior education, be it at the technical or university, that is the key to advancing salary. Otherwise, I think our educational institutions would not be as full as they are, but they do offer such great value, and that's why they're as full. It may be known to some, but I teach at Chappa Valley Tech College in the Industrial Mechanics Program. That program is one of its tracks, is a two-and-a-half semester, 40 weeks. Last year, people who entered that with no prereqs of any prior knowledge or academic achievement reported salaries of $52,000. It shows the value of adding skills to the workforce. We see this across many of our programs throughout higher education. We see we have ample support for all sorts of financial programs beyond student loans. Out of 72 counties in Wisconsin, there's a handful that have adopted such an ordinance. I really think that in the spirit of this, I would like to see this at the state level and be fair to all citizens. I do appreciate the work that has been done by all parties. Thank you.
And the Chair will ask, before I get back to you, since you have postponed your motion, is there other discussion? Any other discussion? There being none, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
You can restate your motion.
May I ask a clarifying question to Mr. Nick?
Mm-hmm.
I know you have already explained it, and I'm wondering if you can share a little bit more again, just to make sure I'm clear. So my understanding with the postponement is that it would be -- sometimes, words are used interchangeably. Table, postpone, indefinitely are used, maybe as synonyms, and maybe the intention is really not to have a synonym. So if something is tabled, what does that look like versus something that's postponed? Can you share that again one more time, please? Thank you.
A motion to table would set something aside temporarily during this meeting. So not likely the right motion, since this is the last action item, absent someone moving to suspend and taking up an ordinance just for introduction. If the intent is to defeat this ordinance without taking a vote on it substantively, a motion to postpone indefinitely could be in order. So what that will do is it will, without a vote on the substantive issue, will take this issue off the council agenda now and won't put it back on indefinitely, as opposed to a motion to suspend to a date certain, which would indicate, hey, we're not ready to take action today, but we do want to see this again, bring it back to us in a month and two months, or when certain conditions apply. So those are the three options you have of moving things off. Tabling moves it within the date, with today's meeting. Postponement to a time certain, or postponement indefinitely, which in essence defeats the item.
Kills the item, really, since we don't take a substantive opinion.
May I ask a follow-up question? So if something is postponed indefinitely, does that prohibit this council or a future council from taking it back up when they feel, whether it's two council members or the body says, yep, we're ready to take it up, we've done our homework, and we're ready to vote on it? Would postponing something indefinitely preclude any future action on something similar to what we're considering today?
It would preclude that unless there was a substantial change to it. Whether it's defeated or postponed indefinitely, the same item would not be appropriate to bring back in front of council. So the guidepost on that is either a substantial change to the ordinance, or at least one year is our interpretation of when you're in session, in essence. Even though your individual terms are three years, you know, we have a new election, some of the members may change. And so within that same year or without substantive change, yes, it would prohibit it from coming back.
Then, did you want to restate your motion? Are you ready? No? No. I believe that means that discussion is still in order. Councilmember Beaton?
I would like to make a motion to table indefinitely.
To postpone indefinitely?
Not to table. I want to table it indefinitely, I'm certain.
To postpone indefinitely?
To table indefinitely.
I think Mr. Nick just described that table is not the right term. But to postpone indefinitely, which means to remove it from the body's discussion? Is that what you mean?
I'm sorry, but what I heard is that according to Roberts' rules, like, we have both options, and one is being recommended to us, but -- and maybe I understood wrong, but...
Mr. Nick, if you can clarify perhaps one more time?
Okay. And again, I'm at a disadvantage, not knowing the intent of the mover. But tabling is really just moving things around today on your agenda. So that's the only reason to use a table. I don't see it applicable. So what we're into, if we want to move it to some point in time beyond today's meeting, it's a postponement. And then your options within the postponement category is to a date certain, in which case this item, just as drafted, will come back before you when that date certain occurs, or a motion to postpone indefinitely, which means it's off. Or, of course, your option is just to vote substantively on the issue up and down, and same effect, frankly, as at least defeating it as a motion to postpone indefinitely.
I'll make the motion to postpone indefinitely.
Now, I'll second that.
So the motion to postpone indefinitely has been restated by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Emanuel. And discussion continues on the motion to postpone indefinitely. Councilmember Tewalt?
Could I ask a question, I believe, for Mr. Nick? Just for our understanding, can you define substantial? What -- how many words, how many changes? Because I think in fairness, we do know there are people interested, and we would kind of like to know what that definition is, so we know, is it a whole year, or could it be in two more meetings, or whatever? Could you define that better for us? Thank you.
There's no specifics, other than, you know, the topic's in front of you, the potential to amend the topic is in front of you. The point of that rule is to not continuously take up time of the body on the same issue. So if it has to do with the same issue, you should deal with it now. If it's substantially different, you know, so, I mean, I have to frankly, you know, review it, but if it's dealing with a living wage in this form, if it's dealing with living wage on other issues that this council considered, either in its pre-legislative or work sessions, or at least have been touched on in this discussion today, you know, as a body, you should deal with those today. So those are the items that have been discussed, if -- and in my interpretation, would be those items would be precluded within that sort of timeframe.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. So we have a motion to postpone, is that correct? And a second? Okay. So I'm speaking to that. Since three of you have -- three councilmembers have thanked staff for the hours they've put into something, there must be something. Were you bringing amendments tonight, and you decided not to bring them? And after all this time and all this work, to postpone and then start over again? I'm confused about exactly what's going on here. So I will vote no to postpone. I want to do this tonight.
We'll just leave that question out there?
Yeah.
I saw Councilmember Strobel.
I guess myself, as well, I question it. I mean, I'm not in support of the ordinance as it stands, maybe for different reasons than my fellow councilmembers, as I've said during the work sessions and stuff. But maybe I questioned the city attorney on that as well. I mean, if we vote and it's voted down, can it come up again? As opposed to the postponers, the same sort of rule, same result, just a different way to go about it?
Mr. Nick?
Thank you, and I apologize for the repeated lights, but good question, different question. Defeating an item is the same effect as, you know, again, postponing it indefinitely. That is, that the body has taken up the issue, considered it, defeated it, it should not come back within a year's time unless, you know, a substantially different, you know, issue is now before the body.
Any further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Are you ready, Madam Clerk, to call the roll? Call the roll, then, please. Councilmember Mitchell?
No.
Strobel?
Oh.
I.
Tewalt?
I.
Bunhaden?
I.
Weld?
No.
Worthman?
I.
John?
I.
Beaton?
I.
Emanuel?
I.
Kincaid?
No.
Clayhammer?
I.
And the motion to postpone indefinitely passes on an eight-to-three vote. There are three ordinances for introduction tonight. An ordinance amending Chapter 9.76 of the code entitled Parks and Public Grounds to include public art encroachments. An ordinance rezoning property east of Jeffers Road and west of the Northwest Community Park for a duplex development. And an annexation, an ordinance in accordance with Section 66, Point 0217 of the Wisconsin statutes, annexing to the city of Eau Claire a section of the town of Washington known as the Holsinger Petition. Do councilmembers wish to suspend the rules and take up any item? I see no such desire. Announcements are in order. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Madam President, but I have no announcements tonight.
There being no further business to come for this body, on a motion by Councilmember Mitchell and seconded by Councilmember John, we adjourned without objection.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.